So I'm the Chair of the Planning Board and I called a meeting to order. The West Newbury Planning Board on March 18th at 7:00. Just because we have a nice audience, thank you very much for coming out. I thought I'd just let you know who we are real quick. My name is Ray Crook. I'm a Registered Professional Engineer in Structures. I'm also retired university professor where I taught civil engineering. I've been in West Newbury since 1995. I've been on the Planning Board for a couple of decades. Yeah?
Hi, everybody. My name is Anne Bardine. I've been in town since 1989. On the Planning Board for a couple of decades as an architect. And I'm retired now, but my profession was, I was an architect.
I'm Brian Murphy. I've been in town since 1983. I also have decades experience on the Planning Board. I am retired now. I was recently with the Vice President of the Metro Boston Bank Facilities Building Works.
I'm Deb Hamilton. I've lived on Middle Street since 1975. And have served on a number of committees and commissions in town. I was a Realtor for 40 years. Some of you may be my past clients and customers. And I'm a parent of two Penn Tucket graduates. And I'm active in the horse community and Vice Chair of the Essex County Trail Association.
I am Tim Cronin. I'm an intern and I've been in town for 10 years and then on the Planning Board for six years. And the type of law, the proximity utility law, real estate, things like that.
I'm Ted Aaron. I'm an Associate Planning Board Member. So the newest member of this team here just joined us about nine months ago. Professionally, I am an entrepreneur and I also do multifamily housing development in Merrimack Valley. So this is near and dear to my heart. Let's talk a little bit about what we're working on tonight. And yeah, I've been in town for about 10 years.
Thank you all. Now, we have an agenda and I suspect that you're here because of the MBTA Communities. Multifamily overlay district. But we reserve the right to take a few things out of order when necessary or when prudent. And we have an applicant who's requesting an A and R, which is an approval not required. It's usually a fairly quick. Review. So because we have people here that can leave as soon as this is done. We'll handle the A and R first. So we'll handle the second agenda item now. And do we have a representative for Mr. Cook?
Yep.
Very good. Why don't you speak to what's coming up? And I think we've got a map there.
Well, first let me say, Tom Cook, I grew up in this town. I actually ate lunch in the doctor's. Wild. Just have a piece of property. My parents bought it in 1973. My mom's still there. On the front part, we had done some A and R lots along Ash Street, Middle Street and then left. 48 acres piece with her house on it. Kind of intended that to say, I mean, I was a postal, I'd be in the agony of a problem with Fisher game. Was a purchase, the back part, which makes it. Anyways, so we've come up with this A and R plan to. Split the main lot. I think it's 10 acres on the front piece to remain and then fishing game will get about 39, 30 to 39 acres if they. Hold perpetuity and it applies. Land that they purchased from the lot, the lovely piece, so creates the contiguous, large contiguous acreage. I believe by law you can't build on it. Fishing game can't build on it. So it'll be a nice open space perpetually.
Very good. Planning Board members, any comments, any concerns?
Go ahead.
Deb Hamilton, your neighbor and bought Christmas trees from your dad for 30 years. Lot one here has 200 feet of frontage. Tell me about the next parcel here, which has your name on it. With frontage on Middle Street.
So this, so when we originally did A and R lots along Ash Street, Middle Street.
Yes.
So we sold three of them on Ash Street. We kept the three on Middle Street open just so my aunt could enjoy her house and I have, you know. Just the neighbors that she's always had. So they're still, they're watched. We're paying, you know, tactical animals a billable lot. They will need to be re-primed. While the Conservation Commission. Orders of conditions and extensions have, you know. Expired. So we'll have to go through COMCOM border health as well.
Sure. You know. About how many acres is that, please? Do you know?
4.04.
There's some, there are a couple of lots of them.
There's three, yes. Three remaining, yes.
This was a while ago.
Yeah, 2017.
Yeah. So you've got a four acre lot, a two and a quarter acre lot and then three, three quarters.
Thank you. I want to commend you for making this contribution to the state. As you may be aware, the myopia hunt has ridden through that property for many decades, probably 100 years. And it has, the portion of it has changed as things have developed. The jumps that used to cross Middle Street from yours into the grass property is no longer there. But nonetheless, getting to and from this area back here requires a trail somewhere on your property. You've always allowed people to, the hunt to use it by work rates and marries that they've been able to ride through. Are you, would you consider making a permanent trail easement that allows access from Middle Street to get to this parcel? Either down your driveway, the top end of the lot or some other way we, you know, used to come through here.
Yep.
And, and go back out to Ash.
I gotta, before you answer that, I gotta jump in.
Okay.
It is part of an A and R.
Yeah.
That's not a consideration. So this is sort of a, an aside. If, if you want to talk about it briefly now, I'll let you, but it's, it's not one of the criteria that we use for people not required.
Yeah, you're kind of catching me. I did, I did mention at the end though during one of the sidewalks and I mentioned that, you know, that you guys have been using the product. I use, I use Wendy Bill says, you know, I said, you could probably get a call. Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I don't talk in my mother.
Sure. Yeah.
Thanks for your consideration.
Sure.
So the, the criteria that we generally look at is, is access to the property. In this case, the public way, right? There is sufficient frontage access and that.
Frontage and access.
Yeah. And it's, you know, it's to be realistic access. There's other words in the line, more precise than that.
Yes.
It seems like in this case, you know, clearly that's.
So what will be lot one, of course, has the access on Middle Street, which is prudent. And then the access for lot two, not that it's relevant in this case, but that would be off Ash Street. And then as far as acreage is concerned, but what?
Now, were there some waivers?
I did request a waiver. I forget the exact section, but there was. The bylaws require a lot of detailed survey on the interior.
Yeah.
It's 38 acres.
Yeah.
And since Fisher game was going to purchase it, they're not going to build on it. I'm assuming that's why that was in the bylaws. So that's just to avoid having three men grow up there for a week, you know, until 38 acres.
Yeah. Just so people know, it's, it's usually the natural occurring characteristics of the property that we've reflected on the plan. So I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at satellite imagery in my map and it's, Deb can attest, she's so familiar with the property and as you can as well. This is mostly a wooded and wetland area in the back.
Yeah. So those are waivers. Consistent with this type of future use.
Anything else? Anne, your my go-to member on this.
State attorney. I move that the Planning Board approve this project as one not, doesn't approve.
Endorsed.
Endorsed this project as one not requiring.
Approval.
Approval under the subdivision control law.
There we go. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Would you want to first, we're gonna have to say our names. Good. All right. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. And what we're gonna do here, we're gonna turn this somewhat. We have an appropriate. This is the weak team, does it not?
Yeah.
Thank you for taking us on. I appreciate it.
I assume that we're in a relation whatsoever. On behalf of the town. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a professional engineer too.
Maybe there's something. That's right. All right. Next item on the agenda is to talk about the, to hold a public hearing. So I will call that public hearing into session to discuss the proposed MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District zoning. For Master Law Chapter 48, Section 5. Do we even have a vote to, to open the public hearing? No. All right. So I hereby declare that it's open. Now, we prepared a little slide set to bring everybody up to speed. We've got good attendance on Zoom as well and they'll be able to, to see the slideshow. And Angus is. Our town manager is getting things fired up. There we go.
Mr. Jack, can you just remind the people on Zoom? The little reminder, so if you want.
No, go right ahead. Go right ahead Katrina. Katrina is, by the way, is our, Katrina, if you don't know, is our town planner. How long you been with us now? A year?
Six months?
Six months.
So if you're tuning in via Zoom, rename yourself with your first and last name on Zoom. Mute yourself unless you are called to speak after raising your hand. Use the raise your hand function to speak. Click on the raise your hand option located at the center of your control bar at the bottom of the screen. If you are using a phone, click on dial star nine to raise your hand.
Very good.
And then do a legal notice if someone.
Yeah, we're supposed to have somebody read it, the clerk, right?
If you want to read it.
West Newbury Planning Board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. To consider an report on the following proposed amendment to the Town of West Newbury zoning bylaw in map one. Create a new section called MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay, which will allow multifamily housing as of right in accordance with Section 3A of the zoning act. Two, add a district known as the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay District to the map as an overlay on particle number. 0020, 0000, 00410, otherwise known as 187 Main Street with a land area of approximately 19 acres. The current zoning bylaw along with the text of the proposed amendment are filed with the town clerk. Those changes can be reviewed as noted here at the Town of West Newbury Planning Board pages on their website. And if there's a person to participate in the hearing by attending the person in 3A1 Main Street, Town Office Building, board joiner from the computer and said Zoom had this.
Now, I'm also gonna do something, right? So I'm a retired professor and went through the whole COVID thing. So I'm, I'm just gonna pick somebody up. I see somebody who's got their camera on. Her name is Deb. Caminiti, Caminiti. And just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me well. Good. All right. Thank you. So. Yeah. So let's talk. Let's go to the next slide. Just so that, give a little background. And I suspect everybody who's here is already pretty familiar with what's going on. But basically, in an effort to make more housing available in Massachusetts. With, I guess, the ultimate goal, that housing be more attainable in Massachusetts. The state decided to pass a law where. Communities that are anywhere close to public transportation have to allow. Building, construction of homes through something, through zoning. They will allow a concentration of homes near. Public transportation stations. And you have communities that have all the transportation, some sort of a station right there in their community. And then you have other communities which are nearby. We're a nearby community, which is, we are an adjacent small town. And in an adjacent small town, you have to allow 15 units per acre to get to a certain number of units. Now, this is zoning that allows him. The town doesn't have to build it. Nobody has to build it. When you put this zoning on an area, when you establish this zoning district, somebody else can come in and build to a lesser number. But we have to set aside enough acreage in a developable area where you could attain a certain number. And that number is 87 units, meaning that we need 5.8 acres. So knowing this, the, the next question is, is there a place in town that would work for this? And we hired a consultant who went through the whole town parcel by parcel, looked at everything. From all the way down south, all the way up to north, east, west, the whole community and came up with kind of a short list. Of potential places for this overlay zoning. Next slide, please. And again, this, I guess I already said this, we're not required to build the units. We just have to have the zoning available. A question came up, a little more background. We've been after this quite a while and we had, we had a public hearing a year ago. And concerns came up and we dug into them more, into that information more. So we'd have it for you tonight. And one of the things that comes up is. If, if a developer wants to do this, are we required to upgrade our utilities so that the developer could do this? And the answer to that is, is no. One of the things in West Newbury, of course, that has kept West Newbury with the rural character that we have is the fact that we don't have pound sewerage. And that means that the number of houses you can build in a given area depends a lot on the type of land you've got. And. You can, you could get around that by creating a sort of a package sewerage plant for a development. But this is, that would be very expensive. And so there's, we have to have an overlay district that would allow up to 87 units. But in reality, even if we establish this overlay district, it would still give a developer some advantages. But the possibility of achieving 87 units on any sort of economic feasibility measure, it, it is. It just, it just couldn't happen because there's no way that you can make the numbers work. A sewage treatment plant is extremely expensive, not only to build it initially, but then to operate it over time. So there's a, there's a practical limit that will occur. And that's why this last bullet here says if anything gets built, the actual density could end up being less than 15 units per acre. And would very likely end up being much less than 15 units per acre. Next slide, please. So then the next question that's come up, it's popped up all over the state and I bet you all have heard about this. Is communities have decided, some communities decided, well, screw it. I don't like the state telling me what to do. And, and we're not, we're just not gonna do it. Well, this, this state in, in the law, the state wrote in consequences for communities that don't comply. And they're serious. Now, a year ago, people wanted to know just, just how much money's at stake here. And actually, a lot of, a lot of investigation has happened in the background. Thank you very much Angus for, for getting into the details here. And it's, it's, it's hard because there's the stuff that they say they won't give us if we don't comply. And then there's the stuff that they might not give us if we don't comply. And of course, things change. We're not always going to be building a new bridge to Newburyport. We're not always going to be doing this activity or that activity. And so it's kind of hard to nail down a number. But after a lot of effort, Angus came up with this and then we, we had financial consultants look into this as well. And it looks like we have the potential to lose a couple of million dollars. For not doing this. And is that an annual basis?
Yeah. Okay. That's over the last few years. And like you said, it has a lot to do with the grants the town is pursuing. The last five years, the town has been very proactive in getting grants. It's been very successful in getting grants. Probably got more grants in the last five years than probably 15 before that.
Well, this goes all the way back. I mean, when Tracy was, was on board, we were getting grants too. I mean, we've got a long history of, of getting state grants. So those would all be in jeopardy. And for people, other towns have tested this and it hasn't, it hasn't gone really well. So. Something I mentioned a year ago is when I became a planning board member, I had to raise my right hand and, and swear to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth. And so it's my, I feel it's my ethical duty to be a proponent of the law. But even that aside, if I just, if I just take that away, like, let's say I'm under no obligation that way and I'm just taking a look at the merits of it. Pros and cons. I'm just gonna cut to the chase here. Because I've been thinking about this as other planning board members have for a long time. The, the more I think about this. I really hope that this passes a town meeting because I think we've got a lot to lose. And if we don't adopt it. Now, some people could argue, well, we've got, we've got some stuff to lose if we do adopt it, but. Taking with pros and cons, it's very clear to me that I think it's best for the community that this pass. So there are, there are serious consequences if we don't comply. All right, let's keep going. By the way, this is just an intro. We've tried to make this brief so we have more time to talk with you tonight. We can go into more details. We have people here that can go into more details as well. So as I was saying, we hired a consultant. They looked over the whole town. They came up with some locations that could work. And then, and then there were special workshops to try to find out what mattered the most to the people of the town as far as what the development might look like. Because we are allowed by the state to write our own bylaw. And with the goal that if a community is built under this zoning. That it would be as desirable as possible to the most people of West Newbury as possible. So we're talking about the look and feel of what the development. So we had these community forums. And the consultants have done this sort of thing before and they helped kind of draft the bylaw and that's gone back and forth. And been tweaked and adjusted till we've come up with the bylaw that would come before the town. And. So we've had, we've had a bunch of these different. Public forums. All right. Let's next, let's go to the next slide. So it came down to a couple of parcels. And we, that's, that seemed like they could work. We also, we've also looked at other parcels seriously and. Legally, we had the, those were drawn out. So it came down to, to two parcels. And then we started taking a look in detail at those two parcels to decide what direction. And in fact, we, we considered the option of bringing both parcels to town meeting. There was quite a bit of discussion on that. And in the end, we concluded that you guys have voted us into the Planning Board. To, to look at the two parcels and as your experts and, and representatives to decide if there's a difference, which parcel would we recommend? And so we, we came to what most people refer to as the NAP parcel. But before we came to that conclusion, we had a vote on that just this year. We did a fire flow study. The question is, if, if you have a development and a fire breaks out, does the fire department have sufficient water to put out the fire? So that's a fire flow study. We did a traffic study. What would be the impact on traffic and, and would it be safe? We took a look at fiscal impact. There's a lot of concern a year ago that if a development like this were to be built, that it would impose a lot on the town and cost the town a great deal. And, and then of course, we had a review by lawyers to make sure that what we would propose would be acceptable to the state attorney general. And. The fire flow study showed that the NAP parcel was good. It's, it's close to a new water tank. The traffic study, the sightlines are, by the way. The, if, if the development is made, the number of vehicles entering and leaving Main Street are. As compared to very recent traffic counts along Main Street, they're, they're pretty small numbers. It's not a big impact. The sightlines, as far as safety is concerned, access to sidewalks and all that sort of thing, that was, that was better than that parcel. The town council review, they came through, there's some wording changes. We, we've got all that into the proposed bylaw. Fiscal impact shows that actually. The town would benefit. We've taken more revenue than. The increase in expenditures because of the people moving in to, to the new community, if the community is dense according to the MBTA. Traditional development would actually cost the town a little bit. Is, we're talking about school kids and whatnot. Police, fire, all that sort of thing. So it actually shows that the MBTA community would actually benefit the town financially. Yeah, I think I've covered that. Next. So. So we came to 187 Main Street as, as the one that we're, we're recommending. If you've been in town as long as I have, this, this is, kind of breaks your heart because I like the nursery. I, I like going in there. I like noodling them out and buying plants there. But that's, that's part of West Newbury's history now. That'll never come back. And we're very, we're very sure that this parcel will be developed. And a number of houses, residences will go on this parcel in any case, whether. Whether, whether we put the overlay district on that or we don't, houses are gonna go in there. And you know what? That we had, we end up with new neighbors, uh every development that we've had in town, nice people have moved in there. Absolutely, absolutely, just kind of going through how it got to where we're at. So um, that's why you end up with this, um, you brought, you all know where it is. Uh, the forward part of the parcel, most to Main Street, uh that would be the, what's called the developable area. It would be about nine acres. Next slide. Uh, so how does this work? We would do what's called an overlay district. And uh it would uh satisfy what the state requires of us for the MBTA zoning. The full parcel would be uh included, but um the way the bylaw is written, the developable area. Would be restricted to the forward part of the parcel. And then um. If somebody decides to come in and take advantage of the new zoning bylaw. They would be able to build. They, they wouldn't have to build eighty-seven units, they could do their analysis, they do their own uh development, their own layout, determine what works best. And uh are, I think realistically, we're talking about forty units. Um, and that's because of the, the limit uh for se- for septic systems to be on the parcel. It does protect open space in the back, now, we do have an open space uh development bylaw already in town. That could be used, and if you've seen, has been used in Falmesby and um. Bracelyne, yeah. Uh, we took a look at that as well. And then, of course, there's a conventional uh subdivision, a conventional development. And uh a conventional development would be, what was it, eighteen, you know, I think it's seventeen, seventeen. Seventeen units, and then, of course, now, uh there's an ADU uh bylaw, so that then in conventional development. Um, you could have a number of accessory dwelling units in addition to the eighteen. And then under open space, uh it would be twenty-seven possible uh units in the area as well. Um, but I didn't understand that much, but, okay, so we, we have a number of ways a developer could develop a plot of land. One is a conventional subdivision, that could probably get seventeen. Then there's our open space preservation development bylaw, which has been on the books for quite some time. And has been used in town a few times. Uh, and under that. We're looking at about twenty-seven, thank you.
So, so a question on that though, you said eighty-seven units, it's, it's, to meet the, on the needs of the state and by the state, it needs eighty-seven units. Yet you're expecting only forty, uh because of septic. So is it the wrong piece of property then? Because it sounds like if you can't, if you're not complying with what the state requirements are.
Well, you know, this, this is interesting, I'm gonna take, so we're gonna open this up, but because this came up now, I don't want to just shove it off. Yeah, no, no, so uh, so the state requires us to apply an overlay district. That would allow up to eighty-seven units to be built. However, because you couldn't deal with, with all the wastewater created by those eighty-seven units. And this is not just my opinion, this is the opinion of everybody who's looked at it hard, including potential developers. Because you can't really practically create a package sewage treatment plant. That you could then pay for by selling off new residential units, you have to go with something else. And that would restrict it to about forty, now, the question is, well, then, aren't you sort of like. Playing a game with the state? Well, actually, this has been tested, and yeah, it's okay by the state, actually, so, so, and.
But the state also said the property needs to be buildable, not available, doesn't have to be available, so you could go with the done property. Cause that's not available, and you're not gonna have any building done, but by going with the actual NAP's property. You're guaranteed to have a building done.
Okay, so this, so I, he mentioned the done property, what it came down to was the two parcels, the done property, which you might know as across from the Church Street. And then the NAP property. And you're correct, you could choose a parcel that. Probably could not be developed, and you could still comply with what the state requires. Some communities have done the overlay district on top of areas that were already developed. To a high density. Um, to comply with the law.
Correct, the union compliance.
Correct, correct.
It'd be the end of the story right now.
So, so hold on, this, this, I wanna finish supply show and then I promise to open it up. I just didn't want to shove something off and make it look like I didn't want to answer the question. Yeah, so um the done property could be developed. Um, but of course, it depends on whether the person, the people that own the property would ever sell it, or when they would sell it. Because, you know, maybe still have to buy the property to develop. And, and I, it's been my understanding that the people in, who have control over the done property would not do that. So if you're asking, could you apply the overlay district to the done property, comply with the state law and never get anything developed there? I think for the next. If you're asking if that could be done, the answer is yes, I, I think that could be done. Um, eventually, maybe, I can't predict the future, but after a few decades. And who knows what the laws would be like then, um, then it could be purchased and developed. One of the things that came into my mind as I'm looking over this is the fact that the NAP parcel will be developed. And uh this is an opportunity to comply with the state law. And uh essentially, for very little change. In what will happen in the future anyway.
But if you develop mostly living six family units, maybe six units for that property, which is more aligned with the neighborhood.
So I am not cutting you off, and I, I.
So where else have you had sixty-six or eighty-seven units in the town that you built?
Well, we haven't, so hold, hold on here, hold on just a second, folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take control back a little bit here. But I'm not, I'm not cutting off the discussion, I mean, I, well, I am cutting it off, but I wanna have this discussion. I just wanna finish the slides, and then we'll open it up and we'll have this discussion, and I also wanna give people on Zoom a chance to, to speak as well. Uh, okay.
Can I just make one very obvious point?
Sure.
The purpose not only is to comply on state law, but to create housing that we need. We have a lot of people who are technically overhoused, they're in houses that are bigger than they need. Who would like to stay in West Newbury, but there's nothing offered for them. We have teachers and firefighters and nurses and people who work in town, people who work in nearby towns. Who have no possibility of living in West Newbury, until, excuse me, let me finish my thought.
Sure, absolutely.
This is, this is a way, I serve on the Affordable Housing Trust, these units are not necessarily going to be affordable housing. But they're going to be the scale that West Newbury needs. We are an aging town, we have people who are in houses that are more housed than they need. We have families who would like to come to town, but three and four bedroom houses with one or two people in them. It, you know, we, we do have enlightened zoning that already allows any house in town to be a two-family. So the point that if this property is not changed in the zoning. But allowed to put in a single-family development, you, you get a lot of units these days. I love the ADUs, the concept that you or, and your children can share a house in, in, in a nine-hundred-foot. Um, square foot house also on your property. This uh zoning in West Newbury is good zoning, and this proposal makes perfect sense. On every level, thank you.
Okay, and, and will allow people to have counter arguments to, to that position as well. I just wanna keep going, make sure we get through the slides. Uh, these, these, I, I, we're, we're sort of obligated to review some of the more recent changes. That you might not be aware of that came up after town council review. So, cause there was a, there, earlier versions of the proposed bylaw. Don't represent the current, the version of the bylaw that we would bring to, that we will bring to the town. So our original concept was to have mixed-use development, which means that along Main Street, for example, you could have. I don't know, a coffee shop or something, that complicates things tremendously, and it turns out uh that. We feel it prudent, and town council recommends that we just remove that whole mixed-use development part. From the proposed bylaw at this time. The development area of nine acres, instead of being called nine acres, it'd be fifty percent of the lot. Because somebody with the, the town council was smart enough to see that somebody could kind of game the system by subdividing the lot. And then building it up. The, the, a subdivided lot, like you saw before with an AR. Um, you could then go ahead and apply the MBTA community zoning bylaw to each little parcel, and it would end up not being what we envisioned. So by changing it to fifty percent of the lot, that assures that it's not overbuilt. We didn't have to mention the floodplain uh overlay district. Um, so we pulled that out, the exceptions to that. The multifamily housing would be the principal use permitted, other permitted units. Uh, are deleted from this zoning is because this is an overlay and the underlying zoning still applies. So uh other permitted uses in this area would be regulated by the existing zoning. Um, and uh we had phrases in there, certain uses that might be required. That might be allowed if you got a special term approved, that's removed because this is zoning by right. The state requires this to be by right. And the same thing when it, when it comes to uses not allowed. So, uh, here's the public hearing, and uh what if, uh, what I, this is, this. We as a planning board don't view this as sort of a rubber stamp, check it off, we did it, we complied with the law. Uh, we view this as, as a useful tool. And um we can't change the bylaw that we bring to the town based on feedback that we get tonight. Uh, so after this public hearing, then we'll finalize the zoning, we'll just make any changes that need to be made. And then go to the spring town meeting for a vote. Um, we have a deadline to have something in place uh of December of this year. Uh, uh, to comply with the state law and not get, uh, not lose. Not lose actual and potential revenues. Now, as far as uh I'm gonna do this public hearing, I can do a lot of them. And uh so what happens next is we have discussion up here with the planning board members. Who can uh add things, correct me if I may have mistaken how I presented it to you. Uh, say anything that they'd like to say, and then uh then we'll open it up to you to hear the public comments. In addition, we'll go further. So uh at this point, other planning board members, is there anything that you'd like to add? And is there anything that I got long in my review of things? No, no good? All right then, so um, let's try to keep it orderly, hopefully no need to be exceptionally formal. Uh, if you're, oh wow, if you're on Zoom and would like to be heard, there's a way to raise your hand. And when you raise your hand on Zoom, your little box goes to the upper left, so it's easier to see. And Katrina can make a note of it, and then Katrina can remind me to take your, yeah? So uh, and then if, if you can't figure that out, you can just unmute and say, me please, or something like that. I don't wanna miss you just because your Zoom is happening. Oh yeah, there's a requirement, it's part of the open uh, open meeting law in Massachusetts. That when you speak, you're supposed to state your name, so please state your name and your address. Very good, so who would like to, to speak? Go right in, sorry, let's start, why don't you go up there?
Yeah, okay, wonderful.
So name and address?
Sure, Perry Park, right, seven R Street, I know it's required, and it's also required to notify the butters. Uh, on these type of things, it is actually, because you're gonna be changing our environment. Do you think?
Not for a public hearing, sir.
Okay, so not for a public hearing, so even though you're going to change the, you're gonna rezone the property that we're abiding next to. Into, into multifamily heavy, type of multifamily?
Well, well, let, let's just, let's just get confirmation. There, there's not a legal.
There's no legal requirement.
There is no legal requirement, uh with that said, there was a mailer sent to every household in town.
You know, there was a flyer last night, right before this, like, late last night, I got a flyer, I'm returning something.
I got mine on Friday.
Excuse me?
I got mine on Friday.
That's great, I got mine last minute.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry about that, we, we did discuss quite a bit.
And it's not a notification for this type of meeting, and I, I think I didn't get the notification the last month's meeting, where you made a decision on this.
So, um. So we got all these boards and committees in town.
But we're butters.
No, we're just, hear me out, we got all these boards and committees in towns, there's authors, open space committee, and uh there's, there's the select board. There's conservation, and there's a standard way of letting people know about our meetings, and um it, it's available on the town.
So you'll, you'll notify me when you start to put fifteen units in on an acre in my, in my, in my backyard? That's when you notify me?
Sir, did you sign up for notifications a year ago? From the town? Did you sign up, did you sign up for email notifications?
I do.
From the town?
I do.
So you must have had notifications of our various meetings.
Okay, so, so that's the way we get notified?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the way you get notified.
Yeah, let me just clarify, when we have a active, when there's an application for the board.
Okay.
Then there are requirements, statutory requirements to notify butters within certain districts. For public hearings or public meetings, uh they are free, the information is freely available, anyone is welcome to.
Okay, so just a question though, so the last meeting I remember uh hearing about, and again, I heard about it, because somebody was at market ass, and had to inform me about it. Uh, was, we never, we never addressed the issue of water for all these individuals. Okay, so you're gonna have, is it gonna be forty units? I think that's your assumption, it's forty units, but it's being required to be up to eighty-seven. And I think the last meeting used sixty-seven, and reviewing the video from last month.
It was never sixty-seven.
Okay, okay, so was it eighty-seven?
Yeah, this is state requirement.
Okay, so eighty-seven, and you're going off the assumption for last month at forty, okay, for, for number of, number of units. So multiplying two for cars, so eighty cars versus eighty-seven units? Possible eighty-seven, okay, so you're looking at close to hundreds.
Let, 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 let me interrupt you just a little bit, first of all, I have to say, I, I gotta kind of defend my colleagues here and, and the town. There, I promise you, and I'm not sure I'll convince you, but I promise you, there has been no effort on our part. To do anything in the dark of night or slide something past people, I, I, I promise you.
Don't you, isn't there a buyer for the NAP's property, a builder?
I understand that there is.
Didn't you bring that up earlier?
Yeah, well, I sort of did, because I mentioned that we're pretty sure this is gonna be developed one way or another, the NAP property.
But in the last meeting, you said you had a, I, I just watched the video of the last meeting today because I heard about it.
Okay.
Uh, so I haven't had a chance to look. So I haven't had a chance to look through the whole thing.
Okay, and then let me also jump in, the eight, the number eighty seven, we discussed this a year ago.
Okay.
And I I'm, that number has been pretty much set at eighty seven and maybe I misspoke or maybe I didn't speak.
No, there's, I looked at last month's video of the meeting and you're using forty, forty, forty units. So and then I think you use point six seven for kids in that area, okay? And and I think on the traffic study, there'd be like fourteen units, fourteen cars coming out in the morning onto Main Street taking, you know, coming out of Main Street. Our our street on Merrill Street has nine houses and I can tell you, we have more than fourteen cars moving in the morning.
Now, I think, I think the, yeah, Angus, you correct me here if I'm wrong, but I think the units is vehicles per hour. When they do traffic study counts.
Yeah, but we're talking about the morning, you have to get the kids to school, you have to take a left to get to the high school.
Right.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Correct, so. So you're looking at. So if the traffic study was done.
Yeah.
And what do we, Angus?
You said we were, you said the video.
I I can pull it up, but you're right, it's the morning peak hour, but I can.
It was fourteen, just so you know, it was fourteen in the morning is what they said on any given work day. Fourteen coming out of the area and only five coming in in the morning.
Okay.
So fourteen, really? Out of Madison, out of the morning.
We need to make this up, you're right.
Right, so you have forty minutes, respectfully, if you have forty units and you have two cars, everybody has two cars, it's eighty cars. Okay, people have to go to work. So how are you, and people have to go to school, so how are you gonna get, have only fourteen?
So let, can, I, can we, can we, I I appreciate your skepticism here. And can we just say that for the record, that you, you're highly skeptical of the number?
Very much so.
And you don't, and you don't think it's accurate?
Again, I live on Merrill, if I have to take a left, I can wait there for five minutes before I got an opening that's safe.
Yeah, there's, there's times I have our timing on the left turn on Main Street.
And that's one part.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Not sixty units or forty, forty units, excuse me, I'm confused with the numbers because it's been changed so many times.
It hasn't been changed and you need to speak correctly to that, sir.
So eighty seven then?
Sir, you you, I don't think you have your facts straight.
Instead, you said eighty seven is what?
The septic requirements in this town will limit the number of units and the state is perfectly fine with that.
So forty?
The units could be, it could be twenty five, it could be thirty, it could be thirty five, it would max at forty. And just so you know, there were two other projects in town, one is off West Jones Street, falls between about thirty four units. And Daily Drive has the same number of units. Those are done done with the same type of septic system that might be contemplated here.
Okay.
So you wind up with some number in that range.
Okay, so since schools are okay with it too, for point six seven or like kid of forty, so what does that end up being, twenty seven kids? Twenty seven. I'm just, I'm trying to understand this because again, I, my water in the summertime where our water gets shut off, or like we can't use water.
So I I'm, I'm a registered professional engineer, but my area is structures, right? Like I can look at these beams and whatnot, I go to that analysis. So I'm not an expert when it comes to figuring out how many kids are likely to be in a certain type of development. That's why we hired consultants that are experts to come up with these numbers. And we didn't tell them to come back with a low number or a high number, this is their best estimate and I appreciate the fact that you can be skeptical, skeptical what experts say as well.
Again, I'm only one, one person, so I'm giving people some time on this, dude, I do have a question.
Nice of the other two developers that I just mentioned have a great, they'll grow children. Do you know that?
I I don't.
You don't, you don't have a.
So that seems like there's gonna be a lot of kids in the age school.
There are not going to be a lot more kids in the age. Well, and then, and then of course, yeah. If people moved in, only some of the people moving in will have school age kids and then those school age kids will be across all the different grades.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I have a pause here, I do have some questions a little later.
For later?
Yeah, very good, I'm sure there's other people have questions, thank you.
Appreciate it. Did anybody raising their hand on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead, man. I'll, I'll, Catherine, just finished your hand right when you said that.
Uh, well, that's all right.
And Dan and Patricia as well. You you should, you're next, if you wanna go next.
Are you talking to me, Catherine Morone?
There was just one person who stood up right before you raised your hand, so.
Okay, let me know, let me know, thank you.
Your bet, name and address, man.
My name's Margaret, I'm an engineer. I live on Merrill Street, it was really interesting to see my property up there for the first time. And you get the postcard maybe Saturday. I understand. I'm a resident of West Newbury before you two moved.
The lucky ones of us.
Well, yeah, I'm a resident of West Newbury before you two moved. I live kind of far down the end of Merrill Street. I run a small honey farm. And I appreciate your concern for teachers because I am teaching, trying to retire in twenty twenty. From teaching at your high school and because of finances, I have yet to be able to stop working. So I'm holding it together, so I appreciate your concern for those of us who are not engineers, architects, realtors or landlords. I'm an excellent teacher. And you'll see I'm not happy, but who would be, this is a David and Goliath. Right, Brian, I'm, I'm the kids. I'm here to just say. I support my neighbors. Everybody who has concerns, they must gonna feel this way. Everyone who has something like this happen in their micro community and that's what this is about, by its own micro community. A smaller portion of the neighborhood of the town is assuming a greater burden. In a quality of life, in property values, et cetera, et cetera. You all are the experts, I'm just a victim. For my neighbors, I would ask numbers to. To spell. I do have some confusion over some of the numbers. And I would like to be more easily visualized what some of the possibilities are here. But I thought I heard tonight, and please correct me, I heard your name is Angus and I don't know your last name, sir, so I don't wanna be disrespectful, but did you say that the total cost of non-compliance would be about two million dollars? I was misunderstanding.
It's, so the total cost of the state grants that the town has received in recent years, the last three years or so.
I agree with you.
That that are specifically excluded if the town falls into non-compliance is just short of two million dollars. It's one point seven million.
Yeah.
There's another two point two million of state grant funds the town has received that is not explicitly prohibited, but because of how the governor and the attorney general have have couched this law, they've indicated that other grants, they'll be taking into account in awarding other grants, whether communities are in compliance or not.
Basically, the community is threatened.
I think that's fair, yeah, you know, I I think that's very fair.
Being threatened by the very people that are supposed to be working.
I I think the state, you know, this is not a policy that anyone in this town or any other town invited practices.
Voted for the people that are opposing this law, so let's leave that there. I find it difficult to, quite frankly, trust the government of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Treat us fairly, ask Diane Desaglio if we should be trusting. You know, we're not even wanting to audit the state legislature. So if we stand to lose two million dollars. When I looked at some of the grants before, I questioned how many of those are essential and have any of those could we absorb as a community? And I don't think that that discussion has been had and I live in the mall, frankly. But I also know that we spent, or at least our portion of a hundred sixty four million dollars on a new school for the community and those of us who don't use this school certainly support that cost, that burden, in order to support something we value, which is the education of students in this community, might give them a long off, but I support that. My question is, if there is a penalty, a result of this threat from the mental state government, would the entire community come together and help bear the cost of that burden like the community has supported with the education? Or should one group of people be required to quality of life, property values and other issues that have been brought up and we really won't know until it happens? Should one small group of people be bearing an undue burden, this one shared? This could be worn equally by the community, like the cost of our education, like the cost of other things in the town. But it's gonna take a little courage, do we have it?
So just to summarize, if I may, and correct me if I've got this wrong.
I will, I'll teach you.
Yeah, that's good. What what you're saying is that it's your recommendation that the town not go in this bylaw and and by, by turning this bylaw down, that we all share the burden equally of not receiving the funds that the state might withhold.
I suppose that's a good way to summarize it.
Okay.
And I want to begin more, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I I would just add that I I grew up in in northern Illinois in a little town called Long Grove and there were three hundred people in the town when we moved in. When I graduated from high school, there were about twelve hundred in the town. And I I go back and it breaks my heart because there were fields and streams that I used to explore and run through when I was a kid growing up that are now just all swallowed up by the Chicago suburbs. I mention that because we're, we're caught. I believe. In the reality that parcels of land are being developed in West Newbury and will continue to be developed in West Newbury. You, the only way that you can, you know, preserve land is to somehow preserve it through restrictions or the town can buy the land and and put restrictions on it, et cetera. But the people that own the land, sometimes this is the only wealth they have in in their family. A lot of the farmers that I knew as a kid, they they couldn't turn the developers down because they, you know, they were working on Christmas Eve, you know, the the cat don't know which Christmas. And and so people, land gets developed whether we like it or not.
Also, over the forty years here, multiple times. And I think Deb, one more, you approached me about buying my property first, first, yeah, you came to my house and I remember and you took a tour.
I didn't, I was looking to help you if you were interested in selling.
Yeah.
I'm glad I was standing.
People, developers have done that. I even had an offer once for to put a cell phone tower up. It would have made my life so uncomfortable. But I value qualities of my community and I value my neighbors, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And I don't know how much longer I'm gonna be able to stay where I am and maybe you guys will be happy when I'm gone.
No, but.
You'll have, you'll have an adjacent property to keep it going.
That, but that's exact, that's exactly my point though, is that that the people have property rights. And if they wanna preserve the land, we saw that today, that a big chunk of land is being preserved by being going over the state. That's one thing, but if people decide to sell a piece of property to a developer, that's their right too, they own the property. All right, we had, we had Dan and Patricia. Catherine Morone can raise her hands first and then Dan and Patricia. Okay, go right ahead, Catherine?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, this is Catherine Morone, two fifty one River Road. And I had two questions. One of them, I'm looking for some clarification on what Deb Hamilton said. She referred to the fact that this M B T A overlay would provide the town with affordable, small scale homes that our aging community could potentially move into. So my question is, do, does the town actually have any control over what size units are being built? And whether they're going to be town home style or high rise style? And also, is there going to be a living area? You know, a gross living area? Point put on these, can they, do they have to be fifteen hundred square feet? Are they twenty five hundred square feet, can be, can they be three thousand square feet? And do we have the ability to to determine what affordable is? What's the list price of these units gonna look like? Are they truly going to be affordable to our community? Or is all of these factors that Deb is referring to actually in control of the builder?
So these will not be, okay, so affordable units, that's a legal phrase.
I guess what I mean is, are they going to be offered at a price point that these people in our town who are aging out, is is it going to be something that they can actually purchase?
So the answer, the the short answer that is, these are not going to be affordable units according to the definition of the state. And the longer answer is, no, we're not controlling the price of these. That would be up to the developer to determine the prices. We tried, you know, through open space development to kind of write in smaller houses with the hope that they would be more affordable and in the end, they were still very expensive. It's, it's the, it's the nature of of building in Massachusetts these days and you know, it's very much more expensive these days to build something than it used to be. Lumber prices, et cetera, labor, it's, it's very difficult and developers know that math. So the 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 short answer is, no, these are not going to be affordable units per se.
Several, several.
Well, there, there's the exclusionary zoning by law that will apply, so there will be a percentage that will have to be affordable, but that that's the same as with any development in town. And in fact, the state has ruled that we cannot require a larger percentage of the units built to be affordable.
Okay, so to summarize what I'm hearing from you, it's really up to the builder to determine what he wants to build and what price point he wants to offer them at. So my concern is that, is that when Deb says this is good for the elderly community, really isn't actually based on anything factual?
Well, the, okay, so the state, this, I'm reminded, it's the state that makes it so. So the state has told us that it has to be up to the developer to determine the prices. You mentioned that whether town townhouses or not, that's, that's also up to the developer. However, in this bylaw, if you flip through it, you'll see that there are parts of the bylaw that control space between buildings and the the height of the buildings and the type of the buildings in an effort to make the buildings not flash so much with whatever else is built in West Newbury. There's an effort there to have some control over the architecture. But it's up to the developer, oh, and then the other thing is that in these sorts of developments, they're, they tend to be townhomes because that's the only way that you can get the density. And there tend to be a community, I'm forgetting the language now, but you're not mowing the lawn, there's an agreement.
The homeowners association.
Yeah, yeah, the homeowners association. Yeah, yeah, the homeowners association covers that. And the units tend not to be four bedrooms and three thousand square feet. So some of what I think Deb was trying to say is that, um. They're likely to be the types of home that help out people that want to downsize. So if you're currently in West Newbury and you have a large home, this would be a way to have a smaller home and not have to deal with lawn mowers.
Thank you. Yes, um, that helps me very much and I appreciate it. Um, I am rather new to this topic, so forgive me if I'm a little naive.
No.
I'm, I'm trying to become educated.
Yeah, no, that's, it's important that everybody do their best. Look, we're going to bring this bylaw to the town. And, um, we're, we're not, we're, we're not royalty up here. Uh, it, it goes before the town. Our obligation is to bring to you what we think is the best solution. But if the wisdom of the town at town meeting is that it is not a good solution. Then you have the power of the vote at town meeting to vote it down. What we're trying to do is provide what we think is the best solution. And we, we've tried to do our research and, and make it the best that we can.
Thank you. So I had one more question.
Yes.
I had, I had one more question. In looking at this nap property, it looks like there are some abutting parcels that either. Are currently vacant or may potentially come up for resale. Uh, would those be potential future MBTA building sites? Or is the overlay specifically only for the nap property?
The overlay district would be restricted to what is currently known as the nap property only. So, uh, abutting parcels would not have the MBTA zoning overlay district on them.
Thank you. That's, that's what I needed to know. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and then we have Dan and Patricia next online and, and a few others after that. Okay, I'll do Dan and Patricia, then we'll come here. Dan and Patricia, please go ahead.
Um, good evening. So Patricia Reeser, eighty-four Crane Next Street. Um, and as many of you know, I'm a longtime open space, um, committee member. And I'm also very much in favor of having, uh, affordable housing in town. Um, with respect to Ms. Morone's last comment, the abutting properties which are, um, not developed currently. Uh, I believe it's true, however, that they could serve as, um. Uh, as septic system opportunity to benefit the adjacent, um, MBTA communities development. Um, and just, you know, let that.
Go right ahead, Anne. Brian?
No, I, I think the parcel gets designated and everything required by the development has to be located on that parcel.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, so a couple of, uh, questions. One is, I think Ray, that you mentioned that there might be initial cost to the town of this development. But that you had a study that showed that long-term, um, that financially, the MBTA communities development would benefit the town. Um, who did the study and where can we see it?
Angus?
Uh, there's a economist, uh, out of Matta Poisett, uh, FXM Associates, uh, Frank Mahady. Uh, that firm's been doing, uh, fiscal impact studies for, uh, many years, decades. Uh, it is posted on the planning board site. I can, uh, there is a chat on tonight's, uh, gym, so I can post the link. Uh, as the discussion goes on, uh. But if that comes through for anyone or, or people here, uh, in person tonight, uh, we can provide that link. It's, uh, it's from the, uh, planning board page. There's a link that says MBTA communities. It's posted there. Uh, it's embedded in a hyperlink along with the traffic study and, uh, several of the other studies that have been referenced tonight.
And, and Patricia, I just want to, to jump in here. I don't know that I said that there would be an initial cost to the town. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think I said it, but if I did, I can't think of what that would be at this point. And the other thing that comes to mind when we're talking about what will happen to this parcel, one way or another. Um, I think a conventional subdivision, uh, would be seventeen lots. Each of those lots could be a duplex, but right. Um, and then on top of the duplexes, you could have ADUs. So, I mean, it would be possible to get up. I think it's unlikely. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to. I don't know, bull anybody here, uh, but it, 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 it could be possible under conventional development. To get to about forty units, um. Through conventional development and then the OSPD gets a bit murky now that there's an ADU by law. As the maximum number of units under open space development is based on something called a yield plan from a conventional development. And so that's something that, that's definitely going to be on our agenda in the future. And Deb, go right ahead.
Uh, over forty years of selling houses in town, about the last ten years here in West Newbury. Any house that I had the opportunity to list or sell or have anything to do with had to replace the septic system. If you ask any of the realtors in the room, they will tell you that most of everybody. It, it is very different and new lots, it's very difficult to find lots that burn. The water table in West Newbury is an average of twenty-one inches. When you have to have four feet of separation between the bottom of your septic system and the water table. It limits incredibly how many, how many acres are actually buildable. Also, having served on the conservation commission for twenty years, anyone who abuts a wetland. Must be aware that not only are the wetlands protected, but the bordering land around the wetland. And if it's a stream, a river, or, um, a body of water, there's additional protection. So I, I recognize that neighbors of this property may see. Um, possible environmental consequences to having a development there. But I have confidence that the work that we've already done to. Demonstrate that this land is suitable for this project. And then finding a developer who will conscientiously develop it. Um, it, it's an opportunity that I don't think we can afford to lose.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll just, I'll, I just also want to point out, excuse you, Patricia, I promise I'll come right back to you. Um, one of the things that I've realized being on the planning board as long as I have is that. Lots that are, eh, good land for housing. Is scarce in West Newbury because the lots that are easy and cheap to build a house on have been built on. Except for, uh, except for our few remaining foldouts. Yeah, there you go. Except, except for, we have some people in town that, that like their land as it is and are keeping it that way. And we all, we all benefit from that.
Conservation commission, all right? There is a value to open space to pass through, I know, uh, I hear about it all the time. What I had to go through last year, because there was a beaver dam on an adjacent lawn. That was putting one of my back hayfields under two feet of water. The state cared more about the beavers.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, what I had to go through to reach a beaver dam. Because the beavers are so important, but slightly uphill from that beaver dam is where you're putting this development. I'm on. It makes no sense.
I, I, I'm smiling because, uh, Peter Boss and I built a small dam when we were in high school and flooded out three, three people upstream. Uh, so I. All right, I'm going to jump, I'm going to come back to, uh, Patricia. Make sure we got all other questions.
Yeah, last, last question is whether or not the planning board has, um, given any thought to, um, waiting until. There's a decision in the, the case that I think four or five communities recently brought. Um, based on the auditor's, uh, opinion that this was, uh, the statute was, or the law was an unfunded mandate for the municipalities.
Patricia, we have talked about that and the, the unfunded mandate part. Doesn't apply to us because we were funded. So in other words, we have these studies done and, uh, we received grants to get the studies done. Is that right? Have I got that right, Patricia?
Uh, no, it's locally appropriated bunch from last, uh, town meeting. Although, actually, you know what? No, the first, the initial, the dots and the flinker, no, that's right. Yeah, there was, there's sixty-seven, five of state funds. That largely funded the dots and the quicker work as well as the water, uh, fire flow. And then there was additional. The traffic, the physical practice was locally funded.
The other, the other thing that's likely to come out, and this is, this is, I'm not a lawyer. Um, if, if, if other towns are successful in the unfunded. Uh, requirement lawsuit stuff. It's likely that the, um, it won't change the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. It'll, it, it just might have an impact on some compensation. You know, we've got, we've got a fellow here from the MVPC, the Merrimack Valley Planning, uh, Commission. Ian is here. And, uh, uh, this might be a good time, Ian, to just touch upon a couple of things if, if you.
If you'd like me to.
Yeah, you might mention the unfunded mandate and the, the other lawsuits.
Sure. Happy to. Thank you. Um, evening, planning board members. For those who don't know me, my name is Ian Burns. I work with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. We're a public agency that supports the fifteen cities and towns of the Merrimack Valley region. For the answers to this, I want to clarify that I don't work for the state or the executive office of housing and local communities. I don't write the regulations. I don't enforce them, but I work with communities across the region to understand the regulations and understand how to prevent them. So that's my role here tonight. I was just enriled doing the same thing just before I came to this meeting. Um, in terms of the unfunded mandate discussion, what has become very clear from the state auditor's office is that. The unfunded mandate is referring to the actual process of writing the zoning and passing the zoning we're doing here tonight. It does not change a community's obligation to adopt the zoning locally. Um, and it is not referring to funds that might be needed for if the development happens in the future. What it only refers to is the after-passing of zoning. Um, and as you mentioned, you receive state grants to support that. And so that's why you all came to the determination that you were funded in.
Uh, can I, can I ask, Ian, in other communities, I think there's a very real concern that abutters take on an undue burden. From the developments. If, if, if you, has that been raised in other communities and what was the response to that?
Yeah, I would say the conversations you're having right now are pretty much the same exact conversations that I saw in the town of Newbury. Where they were discussing their bylaw last year. And so they had a very similar parcel that was in a residential area. Um, and there was an estimate of a potential eighty units, given the, the MBTA communities requirements. The modeling showed potentially eighty units. However, we had the same conversation where we said, given your lack of septic, Newbury is very similar. It's unlikely we're going to see eighty units. It'll be much less. And actually, development was just proposed on that land area and it came in at about forty units that the developer proposed. So we were, it was some positive reinforcement, reinforcement. We were tracking in that direction. And a lot of the abutters during that process brought forward concerns about what would happen if the property was developed. So one of the things that we looked at was the setbacks of the, the property. I don't know what your setbacks are exactly here, but looking at the distance between. The buildings and the property line as well as requiring as a part of the design guidelines. Um, natural screening, things like hedges and fencing and that sort of things from their sightline protection from abutters to the property. And I think you have something like that in your bylaw. I haven't read the whole thing, but having that protection there. And to your point earlier, there's nothing that an abutter could do to, I'm sorry, there's nothing that the, uh, developer could do to abutting properties. Whether it's preparing, putting it to a septic system or something like that. They're only restricted from the parcel. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, Ian, you're, you're going to be here if I have more questions.
If there's other questions about the regulations or anything else pertaining to neighborhood communities, or they're going to have to speak to it.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see, I said I, I'd come back here. There, there is this other gentleman in the back. Yeah, go right ahead.
I, I just had one in order for the quick.
Yeah, if you, if you can come for it, thank you. And again, I need your name and address.
I'm Alfred Nicole. I'm at one sixty-two Main Street. And I only have one question related to something that Deborah said. A little bit. Um, talking about finding a suitable developer. Does the town actually have a say in who the developer will be? Or is it just whoever comes up with the money and, and we, we don't really have a say as to whether.
That's right. That's, so the developer, that's a private negotiation between the seller of the, the parcel. And developer presumably, it would be a developer that could buy.
So we just have our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
That, that's my.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir. Name, address.
This is Pete Fisher, our little fifteen mile. One of the thing I had to say was in your picture, you're only like, and it shows the bright green and then it comes down to the dark green.
Yeah.
NAC had dug a well, not a well, but a pond, it's about two hundred feet circumference. Might have been bigger before you dug. It had nine tails. Most of that, that whole whole section is darker there. I dare you to walk across there with tip waders. They're, they're probably not drinking about it.
Yeah, right. A lot of the land is wet. Yeah, that old back. Yeah. Yeah, there's no question about it. And, uh, wetlands are protected by state laws and no zoning overlay can, can override. The wetlands protections in the state.
So has that been updated as to what is exactly wetlands? I mean.
Yes.
When was the last time that that was?
Well, I, as, as far as, so a developer is part, whether it's a conventional development or not, whether it's this or, or not. The developer will have to, uh, go to the conservation commission. The conservation commission requires wetlands delineation up to certain standards. And stamped by somebody and it, it's all very official to determine what is wet and what isn't. And as Deb mentioned, then there are, there's a buffer, uh, zone beyond that.
So is it possible that after that is verified? That you might not be able to get the forty units in there?
Yes. So again, um, it, 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 it is possible. And, and that's why this, that's why there's this thing which is very upsetting. The number eighty-seven is very upsetting. And then, and then, but then you have to, you have to think about. What restrictions, what practical, practical restrictions will be on a potential developer? And, you know, it's, I gotta say, and I'm not one, but I've seen them. It's not easy to be a developer because there's, there's the wetlands delineation. And there's, there's all the requirements and the proposed bylaw for buffers and screening. There's fire flow analyses. There's all this stuff. And in the end, the developer has to run a spreadsheet to figure out whether or not they can make a profit. And all that stuff, and then the developer knows what they can build with and what the current market is and what the lumber prices are likely to be. And God knows what happens if there's more tariffs and whatnot. Um, in the end, the developer comes up with his or her own number. But yes, it's, all these things have an impact on what the developer can actually put on the ground. And, and the developer, by the way, if this MBTA zoning overlay district is applied here. The developer is not obligated to use it. The developer could come in and say, you know what? My numbers are better if I go with the conventional subdivision. That's what I'm going to do. See him. Or the developer can come in and say, screw conventional, screw the, uh, MBTA. I'm going to use the OSPD. The Open Space Preservation Development. And I'm going to concentrate the homes here. And in the end, that's going to save me on utilities and paving and I'm going to use that one. So this overlay district gets put on. It has to have the acreage that just by really stupidly simple math gives you eighty-seven. But then the developer runs really complicated math to figure out which law they're going to use. If any, the developer can get the land, run the numbers and say, you know what, in the current market, I'm leaving it. I'll come back in a few, a few years. We, we don't know. Yes.
Free people with their hands raised.
Yes, so we're going, let's go to Zoom now.
Uh, next in line was Alex.
Alex, go right ahead, Alex.
Hey, uh, everyone. Thank you. Sixty Mile Street, West Newbury. Um, first name's Alex. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions. I'm going to try to keep it civil tonight. Um. So one of them was, has there been any soil samples conducted on the property yet?
Just, just a second, Alex. We're going to see if we can raise the volume of the speaker here so everybody can hear you. If not, what I'll do is I'll, I'll try to repeat your question.
Oh, I'll, I'll see if I can get it better for you. Is that any better for you?
It's good. And then I'll, I'll repeat it.
Okay. Okay, so I just have a couple of quick questions, um, that I'd like some answers on eventually. It doesn't have to be tonight, um, if you can answer them, that's great, but if not, well, I, I, I'd just like to get the answers at some point. So, one of them are, has there been any soil samples done and any, um, soil testing done of the property where it was used, used to be farm property? Which might contain, you know, pesticides, herbicides, arsenic, which are ma- major contributors to, uh, public health?
So, um, I, usually what happens is developer does a percolation test to determine how much. Septic, how, how easy it'd be to put in.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about septic, I'm talking about.
I understand, so Alex is concerned that there might be, uh, hazardous materials in the land from its, its agricultural use over the years. And it doesn't even have to be agricultural use, it might be a former industrial user, who knows what. So, uh, I'm not aware of any testing that's been done that way and any developer would of course have to comply with laws.
Well, I, I'd like to know before any, any digging starts to happen where I actually was in environmental soil management for a while. I would like to have a, a, a record of that in case there is asbestos in the ground and it could affect the health of children and, and bystanders. Don't wave your hand, no, don't wave your hand at me like that, that's absolutely disgusting.
That's the developer, sir.
No, it's not, that's on the town.
No, it is not, so.
Sure it is.
Alex.
Does the town know something about this property?
I, I, I have never heard of it, but, but Alex, um, I, I mean this, uh, quite sincerely here, I'm concerned about this stuff too. Um, but, right, this would be like any other land transaction and development in town. This is between the, uh, uh, the seller and the buyer. And then the developer has to comply with state laws. As far as testing soils for dangerous chemicals or heavy metals or whatever, I don't know how that works.
So, so, so the town's putting their name on a property that they're going to sell to a Realtor or the.
No, no.
Or the, or, or, or the property owner's going to sell to a Realtor because this is what fits the town?
So this, this is like, Alex, this is like any other transaction in town, this is between a private seller and, uh, a buyer. Uh, who's likely to be a developer. And, uh, the town is not putting the town's name on this. The, the, uh, only thing that we do as a town is put on this overlay district. Um, that would comply with the state law. After that, it's, it's all a private operation, it's a private transaction.
So, so what is your recourse if the contractor finds contaminants in the soil? Which now requires a further remediation, which is going to put the project on hold? And now you just have piles of dirt sitting there because it can't get disposed of?
I don't know, when, when I was working in land development as a young engineer, um, for example, a gas station property. Um, you try to convert it, you bring the soil out, you test it, if it's contaminated, then that changes all the, all the, all the finances, of course. Um, and, and so I imagine that a developer, if the developer has any concern, before a developer enters into a final contract, the developer would test the land. And it, it might, it might bank the sale, I, that's, that's all private stuff, that's, that's not stuff that, that we deal with directly.
Yeah, I, I don't want a pile of dirt sitting in my front yard, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, right, of course not, but like any.
So I want the town to take appropriate actions to make sure that this isn't going to happen.
Well, well, a developer, a developer always has to obey the, the regulations of the state and the town and the Conservation Commission. And, uh, they, they have to protect the butter's property, uh, during construction. And, you know, afterwards, the, the way the water flows, uh, after development has to be the same as the way the water flows. Before the development and it's, yeah, that's all stuff that's controlled by state.
Okay, do you know what the, the typical setback is for a, um, for a property like this amongst wetlands and then what the no build zone is?
Um, Deb would know the setbacks from wetland delineation.
Uh, uh. It varies.
No, I'll tell you, it's twenty-five feet and a fifty-foot no disturbed build zone.
Excuse me, you want me to try it? If there's a pond, uh, and we do have a member of the Conservation Commission sitting in the audience, don't we? Yeah, so it's a hundred feet, as I recall, to, from the edge of a wetland, which is not just the edge of the pond. But a, usually a hundred-foot buffer zone, larger than that.
There's a hundred-foot buffer zone, but that doesn't prevent building into that buffer zone. But many houses are within, you know.
Within the.
Twenty-five feet of the.
You have to be at least twenty-five feet from the edge.
So there, so there are conservation, uh, uh, restrictions and a buffer zone. From the wetland's delineation, from moving water, from, from pond water. And then there's, uh, there, uh, there's required setbacks from property lines and, uh, yeah.
So that's moving water and pond water together, what, what, what you're doing with there?
Um, these are conservation questions that we have not, we don't have an answer for.
But the bottom line is, uh, that this, that the protections that apply to wetlands.
Yeah.
Would not change because of this overlay district. And whether the developer develops using the MBTA zoning or other zoning on this parcel of land, those protections would be the same. Is that good, Alex? Alex, I think we may have lost you, feel free to come back. Let me, let me get a couple more from Zoom.
Susan, they met here.
Hi, Susan Demadia, I'm at one ninety-two.
I missed your address, Susan.
It's one ninety-two Main Street, so I'm directly across the street. Um, so just trying to wrap my brain around all of this and get some clarity. Um, with the plan that you showed earlier for potential development. Where is the entry and exit point to the property? Um, and then in the links that were shared, is the traffic survey included in that? Because I would be curious to see, because for instance, this morning, it took me fifteen minutes to get out of my driveway onto Main Street.
I also have to get onto Main Street, I share your frustration there, I'm going to add a little bit in there. Yeah, and, and you, yeah, so, um, actually, there.
I, I had my hand raised.
But, yeah, yeah, I know, I will, I just might, so, um. The project entrance, thank you, the project entrance, the exact location of it would be up to the developer. The traffic study was done with a likely entrance. You mentioned a plan that was shown, when we hired the consultant, um, the consultant came up with these sort of broad concepts. But the, it would, the actual way the development would go would be up to the developer. And so that previous plan showed way more units than is, that could be built because of the septic things we've been talking about. And the exact location of the entrance onto Main Street, um, would likely be west of the swale. Um, and east of the house, but we don't know, that's up to the developer. Yeah, we did, we did talk about, about it and it's, um, I suspect the developer would use the entrance. That it currently exists on the NAP property, there's.
Okay.
Ideally, for traffic, you want to line things up directly across from each other. I, I don't think that that can be done exactly here.
Susan, uh, the, the state would also have input on this because it's a state highway. And, you know, they like to make things nice and organized, so. One, one could assume that it might be opposite Harrison. Uh, but, you know, they, they would have a, a very strong say in the matter.
Yeah, there's, there's something, people call it curb cuts. And the state has control over all the curb cuts on, uh, on Main Street because it's state highway one thirteen.
Okay, um, another question that I have, so I'm a multifamily property manager. Um, and I know that there is a requirement for a certain amount of units. Um, to be affordable or to be an inclusionary housing program. Um, do, does this, does our town have. An inclusionary housing department that would manage that? Um, as far as getting applicants, certifying them, making sure they meet the qualifications? Because I work in Cambridge and it is a nightmare.
I know it's a nightmare.
And.
And we've had, we've had planning board members in the past who have educated me on inclusionary zoning and how hard it is to do. But, uh, this, this development, like any other development, would be required, we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw in town. And they would have to meet those requirements, and yeah, I know what you mean about getting qualified applicants and having the, the public meeting and the bidding and the, the gruffle. That, yeah, I know it's not easy, but it's the, whether they use this overlay district or they develop in another way. They're still subject to an inclusionary zoning bylaw of West Newbury.
Ray, if I could just elaborate a little bit.
Yes.
Under the, uh, any of the units that are affordable in order to be recognized as affordable under the state, uh. It's got to be entered through the, uh, local initiative program, the LIT program. And that's very regulated, uh, includes lottery, uh, so on and so forth. The select board is the monitoring agent, uh, for, uh, the, the affordable units in town. Um, and they've delegated that responsibility to my office as town manager. We do have a consultant basically under contract who assists us, there's annual reporting we do, but more, more to the point that the. Uh, resident made is, uh, on resale, either initial sale or resale, that's very highly regulated. Uh, the minute we get notice of, uh, intent to sell an affordable unit, we call that person. They manage the lottery, they do the, uh, prequalifications, getting into people's tax returns. We don't do anything, we don't see any of that, uh, that's all, uh, really managed by someone who does that. Full-time, year-round, who's expert at that, uh, so, so the town is the monitoring agent. Uh, we do that through, uh, work with a third party.
Did you get that, Susan?
Yes, I did, um. And one last question, um, you mentioned that there is a potential interested developer. Um, I'm not sure who they've spoken with, but can you elaborate any on that and what the conversation has been? Or I guess potential buyer, um. Who is it? If this does get passed, which I hope it doesn't, for the sake of my property and my livelihood. Um, of this being directly across the street from me, it's devastating. I moved, I'm originally from Tennessee and I moved to West Newbury because of the small town feel that it has and that there's not. Developments like this, and I work in this industry and I do not want to be anywhere near a development like this.
I, I, I understand, Susan, um. We, we, yeah, we do have, we do have, well, we've got more than two, we've got Collinsville, we've got Daly, we've got Ocean Meadow, what was the first one? There was a, no, there was another one up the hill. In, in any case, I, I hear you, Susan, uh, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, as far as naming names, um, I don't feel it's appropriate for me to do that. Um, again, these are, that's a private transaction between the seller and the buyer. And I don't think it's germane to the discussion of this potential bylaw. Um, and I'm not, I'm not trying to hide anything or anything like that, I'm just trying to, to, to keep things.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to understand so I know what, what direction it might go. Just because being in the industry, knowing developers. I'm just trying to get a better idea of how this would go if this gets passed, um.
We, whether or not the town approves of the MBTA overlay zoning. I keep hearing from people that this land, uh, will be developed. And we all hope that the developer is responsible. And it, you know, I know of developers who really want to build nice developments. Because they sell better if they're nice developments and they match the community, but. Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, so I'd just like to point out, the, the two developments in town that were done, uh, from twenty fifteen on, or ten years ago. The cottages at River Hill, which is off Whitestone Street on Fallsby Lane, and the Daly Drive, uh, Great Slant Project. Uh, both were done by the same developer, the cottage-sized units with a few duplex units interspersed. They sold extremely quickly. They're, they're, they, faster than we can think and they highly recommend on the market, once in a while, one comes on the market, people love them. They were maxed from thirteen hundred to about eighteen hundred square feet. And the demand shows that there's a market for that in this town.
Yeah, and I, I'd also point out that, um. A butters to those developments shared similar concerns. And, um. You know, I mean, it, it is what it is. The other thing that I got to mention is that the people that move in, uh, they're generally really nice people.
They're nice folks.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's not about the people.
I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it becomes, it becomes citizens of the, of the town of West Newbury.
I, I understand, thank you.
I want to.
We have that, uh, this Eric McKay has had his.
Oh, Eric, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Eric, go right ahead.
All right, you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, um, I am at forty-nine Main Street, that's this house right behind me, um, right near, uh, Pennsaukets, um. I guess, uh, I don't, I only have a question, but, um, I just want to kind of offer, um, I just, I really love this idea and I'm, I'm glad that people on the board support it. Um, I'll first say, I know it's, it's easy for me to say, being pretty new to the town and, um, not lived in a place quite like West Newbury before. Change is a little harder when, you know, you've lived here twenty, thirty years, I, I totally get that, but I think, um, I, I think a change like this would be really good for the town and, um. I support it, so, I just love the idea and, um, and I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're leaning into it. So my state's mandating it and when this happens, you know, you can adapt or be stubborn and I'm glad that we're, um, I'm glad that we're leaning into the idea. That's, that's it.
Thank you for the comment.
Sir.
Thank you. Yeah, Perry Conrad, Southern Mile Street, um, I had a couple of questions, um, some that were provided to me from, from other individuals during this meeting. Uh, one was on Crane Neck. Um, has there been a study on any private wells that may be impacted through this, uh, high septic concentration?
White Flame Dexter.
Excuse me?
White Flame Dexter.
Uh, because I believe it borders that area and I thought I saw something on the video last, from last.
So that's a long way from Crane Neck Street.
Okay.
So it's unlikely, but a, a relative question would be, is it going to impact wells on, on, uh, on Merrill, right? Or, or any of the other butters?
So, okay, revise the question on Merrill Street, because I do live on Merrill. And the hillside, as I brought up in the last meeting, or one of the previous meetings, um, hillside comes down to my property. Okay, so sewer and rainwater is, uh, wetland in the bottom there, so how is that going to be mitigated?
So there's, there's two things, you mentioned, right, you mentioned wells, but, uh, uh, it's town water in this part of town, right?
Yeah.
So this, this would be on a town water supply, somebody might have a well for agriculturally, no one's likely to step in.
I think what he's referring to is if you go down the back end of the yards.
Right.
Those, the homes along Merrill Street, it does, um, go down.
Okay, so.
And it, there is visible water.
Stormwater runoff.
Yeah, so there's an open, a lot of, that were drained and natural.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like.
Which would be.
So.
All the way, the ball, falls, all the way, the past ours and then to the show.
Right, so this is, this is, the, the violence of this is called stormwater runoff concerns. And, um, so as, as we all know, um, and then rains are getting more erratic, it seems, we, bigger storms, more concentrated rain. Um, the, the state law requires that the way, the volume of water leaving a parcel. And the rate at which it leaves the parcel has to be the same after the development as it was before. And so, so this is, well, and, and I, I appreciate the skepticism. And so, so this is, well, a, and I, I appreciate the skepticism here, right? But this is why you see stormwater detention ponds in new development. And the idea is that you're creating more hardscape, water comes off the hardscape faster. And so that water has to be diverted into holding ponds that then release the water more slowly over a period of time. And exactly the size and volume and the way the water comes into it and the way the water leaves it, that's all done through stormwater engineering. Or through, uh, uh, water resource engineering, which is part of civil engineering.
So there's not gonna be septic on the side of the building, it's gonna come down to my property?
No.
Are you sure of that?
So as much as anybody, as much as anybody can be sure, when the engineering is done. Basements.
It was a legitimate question.
A, a butters, it is a legitimate question. The, the basements of a butters should not flood more or less often. Uh, water on the ground shouldn't accumulate more or less than it did before. Now, if you're skeptical of the engineering and the result of the development, I appreciate that.
Cause once it develops, then you've seen that it's.
That it's different.
So what do you do?
What do you do, exactly, and I, you know, I would like to say I know the answer to that, but I'm not, I don't know the answer to that.
Good question, good question on that is, I, I know the MBTA listed, uh, fifteen units per acre and of, if going up to three stories. For a building and also every fifty feet to change the roof line, so again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big building, I mean, the, the other building we have is.
These are examples.
Right, right, not that will, you know, might sit.
Some, somebody, somebody could do one of these buildings, so keep, go, go ahead.
So, yeah, concerned with that.
Yeah.
Concerned with that, and I hear you, there was another builder before, okay, but what happened to the Mullen property?
Wait, wait, okay, so I'll, I'll answer the Mullen property thing.
Okay.
But, uh, I, I don't wanna skip over your concern about the big buildings, is, is that a concern about the visual?
Yeah, 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 there's no, there's no difference between us in that field, so whatever gets built, we save.
Well, there, there would be, if I'm, I'm correct with it. There's a requirement in the proposed bylaw, bylaw for visual offering to the butters and setbacks. Now, I can, I, I'm still, I'm still angry, because it was like twenty years ago. Somebody from the town said we wouldn't be able to see the highway barn. Stood up in town meeting and said, oh, where the highway barn is, you'll never be able to see that from Main Street. And I was thinking bullshit, you'll be able to see that from Main Street, and I see it all the time. So I, so I'm still ticked off about that, and I understand why you would be skeptical of visual buffers.
I'm looking up the hillside, and on top of that, there's no trees in the way, except for having.
No, I actually, if, if, if you're looking up, a visual buffer is, is gonna be way more effective than if you're looking down. So, okay, all right, all right.
What's, what about the Mullen property?
So the Mullen property, we did look into the Mullen property, and it turns out that state laws. Make that property unavailable for the MBTA zoning overlay district, if I got that right, Angus.
In, I mean, in practical terms, you know, that in order for the state to consider that the town had met its obligation. The town would have not only needed to put that property out for disposition through a bid process. It would have needed to actually enter purchase and sale agreement with the developer. And, by the way, pass the zoning.
Ball's by December.
All by December, so it is not literally impossible, but it was. Completely unfeasible. Cause there would have, there would be the same neighbor concerns about that, everything we're hearing today, Andrew would need pounds of consent to declare.
This is a town forum here, so we, we talked about this before, on numerous meetings in the past. And each time, people keep bringing up the same situations that, why don't you go with what the, the state asked, that a property be. Buildable and it didn't have to be available, and, and then again, the done property, that fit that, and we've been, in the story, it would not be built. We wouldn't add this in, but in the last meeting, again, I just saw it, literally today, because somebody forwarded to me, because I didn't know about the meeting, because nobody notified me. So in that meeting, in that meeting. Smiles aren't happy, okay, I'm, I'm not happy, I'm gonna butter, okay?
I understand.
All right, so I don't, I don't respect the, the smiles, okay? Now, my question is, my question is, is. Why did we not look at? Uh, on that meeting, if you stated, if we're going to build. Okay, we're serious about building, let's put it on, put it on the done, on it, on the NAP property. And by doing that, and you say we have a builder ready to go. So that means you were already persuading your decision on that property. Based on an individual who's a builder, who's been on this town council, on this planning board. So you already have that, that from an ethics standpoint, you should not have even, you should have excused yourself, it was one person that you already knew. From an ethics standpoint, you could have went with what Maureen Healy stated was, if it's buildable. What Maureen Healy's direction was as wrong, because you guys asked for clarity, and other towns asked for clarity. Building it, a piece of property that's buildable but not available, the done property, we would have met that, we wouldn't have any of these discussions. We wouldn't be forced to have this and a change in our neck, our, our neighborhoods and, and causing all this chaos as well.
Sir.
Yes.
That parcel of the NAP is going to be developed.
I understand that, but we don't need to be, we don't have to be told by the state on how we build our community. We, all we need to do, we can do that ourselves, the state shouldn't be dictating how we rezone our, our town. If that's what we can say in the last meeting, but you ignore the people and you keep moving forward with this.
Vote in town at town meeting, that's your right.
All right, all right.
And then.
But in the, in the, what we'll have in the town meeting is you're gonna go two options. A, with the NAP property. B, it's gonna cost us because we're not gonna get Massachusetts funding, where you could have the option B, that you have the, the, the done property. And there's gonna be, and people would be like, oh, we're gonna still meet them requirements, we'll still have mass funding in, in, in the story. But you're sweet, you're all sweet because you know the builder, and you stated this before, you said it in the last meeting. It was very smart, when you were speaking on the last meeting, and I just saw it today.
Okay, hold on, hold on a second. I, I take my ethics responsibilities. Very seriously.
I hope you do.
I do, I do, I take it very seriously, and it, with, within being a member of the planning board, and also. I, I'm smart of professional ethics to be a registered professional engineer.
Uh, well, that's great.
No.
You've said that every three times tonight, I respect you, but, but the bottom line is, you've already stated. That you have a builder ready to go based on this decision. And go with this, with this goes, if, if it's.
What, what I've stated, what I've stated repeatedly is that it's my understanding that this property will be developed. And yes, the fact that this property will be developed has influenced my personal decision, my personal opinion. Correct, okay, wait, hold on. That, that's, that's right, that's right, wait, hold on, hold on. It, it has influenced my opinion about which parcel is the better parcel to build. We can disagree, we can disagree on that, that's fine, and I respect that. I respect the fact that you don't like the state telling us what to do or how to do it, I respect that too. But in my mind, I'm looking, okay, it's, it's five years from now, all right, it's twenty thirty, God willing, I'm still here. And how does the town of West Newbury look, whether we go with one decision or the other? If we, if we put this overlay district on this parcel. How will the town look? Well, it'll be developed, and the developer will have chosen one of three ways to develop the land. Conventional subdivision, somewhere between seventeen and forty, more likely. Talking about twenty-something by the time they do some duplexes and some ADUs. Um, the open space to preservation development, probably on the order of twenty-seven to thirty units. Or the MBTA thing, maybe up to around forty. And if I take a look at with the vote or without the vote, let's say we voted in, how does the town look? We got maybe a four-unit development upsetting to the butters, but there, people have moved in. Because of these sorts of, of, uh, architectural pins in the bylaw. Not like everywhere else in town. In my opinion, and I, I respect your, you're disagreeing with it, in my opinion, not too bad, not clashing too much. And, uh, and we've had the benefit of the town's support. If we vote it down, what happens? Well, we've got. I don't know, twenty to thirty units on the NAP property, and we've missed out on. Roughly speaking, one to two million dollars a year over the last five years from the state. And also legal expenses, because now we're in Florida. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm not saying this is how you should think. I am not, I'm just telling you what I was thinking. Okay, the actual person who develops the land. I hope is a good developer, that does a good job for the people that buy the places and for the town in general. I have faith that the developer will be there, but that did not influence.
So you know the developer then?
I've heard the name of the developer, I do know that developer, but that.
We can't, like, from the last video, from the last video.
All right, you know, wait, hold on here, okay. Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, I mean. He seems to be the spokesman for other people on the floor, but I wonder if we can, if we can hear from people directly.
I just wanna make sure that if it goes through the town vote, because that's what I believe is supposed to happen.
It has to.
Okay, it has to go through a town vote.
Yes.
Option A, if it's going to be the NAP's property, okay, and then option B should not just be, it's not the NAP's property, and we're gonna. Get hit by a, a penalty from the state, it should be opt.
Don't shout on your shoulders.
It's like, it should be B to say, option B could be the done property, and it's, and the story, we don't need to, we do not need to build.
If, if, if it gets voted down, it's bring town meeting. We go back to the drawing room, and we, we, we bring forward another version of this in fall town meeting, we hope it lasts.
And just so for folks who aren't familiar, because again, I've only been pulled into this because of, of, of being in a butter. But for people who are not aware, this, other towns have taken other areas and zoned their property. To say they meet the requirements, it's buildable, but it's not available, it could be an, an area that's. The, it could be this area here, they could rezone this area, it's buildable, but it's not available.
I, well, I don't think it can be town-owned, probably.
Cannot be town-owned, but I'm using it as an example.
I understand what you're saying.
It could be, uh, an industrial area, it could be a large, an area already developed. Uh, and that could be done, because they, they don't wanna have the extra, uh, development in their town.
That's correct.
But you're all, all for building in the last meeting.
No, my personal opinion here is that.
Based on the base that everybody's, for all the building optimism.
Because, be, because this parcel is likely to be developed anyway.
Again, that, but it's not dictated by the state, we don't need to listen to how the state does it, we can determine how we want it to ourselves.
You'll, you'll, if, if that came before us on a special permit meeting or hearings. You'd have the same objections, sir, and I appreciate that because you're in a butter, and we've, we've seen this before with other developments, I appreciate that. We're trying to say, we know it's going to be developed, it's going to be developed. And this.
You don't know that, there are other people that try to make lethal offers and build, make it into a farm, and they've not been.
Then, then you, somebody can pursue that, it's a free country, and if they, if they own over the land, it is to sell it to someone else, like. Wait, wait, let me, let me just. Let, let, let me, let me just make sure that, that we get it. Would it be, uh, it can, would you mind stating your name and address? Thank you, good, do you wanna?
I don't really wanna, yeah, no.
Okay, all right, well, can I repeat then, your?
What I'm trying to say, that you may give us this false narrative that if I, that it's going to be developed, we ought to develop it this way. Based off of the MBTA guidelines, or somehow it's just gonna be developed by somebody else, we have no idea, and that's not true. There have been a lot of people who have tried to work to plant, but are not allowed to, because it's held by the developer. And whether or not you guys zone this property, if you zone this property in the MBTA law, we're done. But if you don't, there's room for other people to put together, to offer and make it a farm, but we can't do that right now.
Aaron, okay, so, wait, let, let me summarize, so, what was your name again?
Erin Way.
Erin, so Erin, Erin is stating, just cause I'm not sure people on Zoom heard you, Erin is saying that, um. If we, if we, if, if the overlay district gets put on at town meeting, then it's a done deal. But as it stands right now, there is a possibility it will not be developed, because there are.
Not the way that you're talking about, there's a possibility that allows for other people to participate in something else.
So, so her point is that, that if. If the MBTA zoning doesn't go on it, there's a possibility it won't be developed, or at least it won't be developed in this way.
That's right.
Okay, good, I'm glad I got it right, my, 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 uh. My point there is that. It, with or without the MBTA zoning bylaw overlay. There exists. Options, one is that somehow somebody buys the property, maybe through the town, there's an open space, um.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yep.
And, and, and keeps it open.
Or, like, small tiny houses, that are affordable, for teachers, that really could buy it, like, I would love to buy it. And, okay, small houses, they don't have ninety thousand dollars, but teachers really could purchase, and we could come up with a mini garden, and make it a real cool class. It does, that looks like the character of our meeting.
I got you, she's saying that, that it could be developed in a number of ways, including tiny houses that would actually be affordable for, for people like teachers.
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha. I, 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 this part of, of what you're saying, I believe still exists, whether.
Not, because there are developers that have contracts on it, dependent on your zoning.
Well, you know more about it than I do, and that, I, that's the honest to God truth, I, I intentionally have stayed clear of any details that way.
I don't hear what you're talking about.
There.
I've never heard that.
But in any case, yeah, I, I think, um, until the piece of property. Is purchased and developed, all these possibilities still exist, whether or not the MBTA zoning is on there. Let me just be clear, it might be more financially lucrative. To have the additional option of the MBTA zoning, but as it exists, with or without the MBTA zoning. People have the right to buy the property and preserve it forever.
Once you take that zoning and allow already seven.
No. Actually, no, we, we did, we did the yield plan, and, and right now, under existing law, without any special permit, just by right. People could put seventeen duplexes on that property if they thought that would make them money and they wanted to. Or people could put in four big gigantic McMansion type things. Or somebody being creative could come up with. Putting in small houses and then each one with an ADU, somebody could do that. That's, that's, that's not our decision, and, and whether or not this zoning exists, those possibilities still exist. Yeah, yeah, and.
Together, you could, I guess I'm trying to say that the whole thing could be a lot, much more simplified, if you just put the zoning.
Erin, may I just say that. I serve on the corporate housing trust, and my dream for this property is to make as many of the units in there affordable. For people like you're describing, I think that this is an opportunity to do that in a way that. Gives some guidelines that limit the size, shape. Of the units that can be built there, um, it's, it's the only way I see, we are likely to get. You know, possibly even apartments, possibly rental properties, there is, there is lots of directions this could go to create affordable housing. Or, I, I, let's use attainable housing, if, if, but as Ray pointed out, legally, it's, it, by the state definitions, it's not affordable.
I see, I see that Catherine's waiting on Zoom, but first I wanna come to the floor, and then Catherine, and come back to you.
Um, Molly Hawkins from, uh, three forty-seven Main Street. So I was in your position, I'm in a butter to Drake's Landing, I understand what you're feeling right now. Um, this was me, ten years ago, very unhappy with what was gonna happen, um. It hasn't been, you know, all roses, like, I'm sure very nice people live there, but we've had dreams of issues with stormwater. Um, but those have been resolved, and I feel like. This is giving our town an opportunity to, as Deb said. Perhaps provide more attainable housing for people in our community, um. You're, you're mentioning done, why can't the town have done, well, that would also be abiding my property, so then I would be taking the burden of both Drake's and John's. Like, everything has their own subjective view of what's happening.
I know you got the board, that is, you're done, kidding me, I'm, I'm nothing towards that, I'm. What the reason I mentioned the town is because they brought that up and they said that, that, that current owner has no plans whatsoever to sell.
Right.
So if they have no plans to sell, nothing is gonna happen.
Well, but that could be your farm, that could be something else, I mean, that is an opportunity. You know, the daily field was an opportunity into this town dropped, I don't remember what, I wasn't here in town when, when the town was. Um, choosing whether to preserve that field. They didn't wanna preserve it, I, yeah, and I had great fantasies of what could happen in, in Drake's, you know, the daily field, and those didn't happen. And we do have a certain vibe for the pool.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'll say, that was turned down at town meetings, there was a proposal for a, uh. A large recreation area and building and whatnot, uh, and it, it, it failed.
And that's very sad, and, um, and as, you know, in terms of Mullins, you know, that. I'm also the chair of the conservation commission, that would be a nightmare to develop Mullins, uh, it's forested. Their wetlands all throughout, it's got a lot of great changes that both Dunn and, um, NAPS didn't. Didn't have, um, you know, maybe NAPS is compromised by chemicals or arsenic. Wouldn't we rather redevelop that in a. In a proper way, rather than clearing a forest and impacting wetlands. So, uh, that's just my two cents, I'm sorry, like, I, I have a lot of feelings about this, I really support affordable housing, I work. Um, with people who are unhoused, and it really makes me sad because most zoning. Towns are the ones that determine whether affordable housing happens through, through zoning. Um, so groups like this that come in and say, not in my backyard, they're the ones that make housing less attainable for our people. And it makes me sad, so I hope you see, we can find it not hard.
This isn't affordable housing though, I think it's only ten percent, is that right?
The inclusionary zoning bylaw, which makes state. Uh, counting, housing that can be counted by the state is affordable, is ten percent.
Right, so about a forty you're.
I like the word she used to attainable, there's attainable, and now there's affordable, that question, attainable depends on who you are, right?
Notice on page thirty-nine that, you know, that the planning board should waive some of the inclusionary housing. And I would vote that.
Actually, we dug into that a little further and we don't have to have that waiver as a possibility.
The highlighted section, um, says the planning board may waive some for all of the inclusionary zoning provisions.
And the reason why that's highlighted is because we wanted to see if that was necessary, and we found out it wasn't. So what we would bring to the town would not waive, that, that would be struck. We won't, um, I, I, I wanna, I promised Catherine, uh, Marlon, Maroney. That we'd come back to her, Catherine, are you still there?
I am, and I appreciate, um. You circling back around to me, I wanted to start by saying that. When people are on a Zoom call. It's a real challenge to follow the discussion. If people in the audience. At your site at the annex are speaking or even whispering, because it actually breaks up. The conversation on our end. And so sometimes, so sometimes we're left with a lot of dead air. So it's just a little frustrating and I, I'd like us to remember for future meetings that. Well, some of us may wanna jump in and, and I will raise my hand and say I jump in a lot when I'm in a group. Um, that we have to kind of be respectful of the sound system that we're working with. And, um, we need everyone to be quiet if they're not actually speaking. So that we can actually hear, I'm concerned that the questions I'm gonna ask are actually already been addressed, but I didn't quite catch them. So with that said, I'll move on. Um. I believe we touched on. The fact that there would be bylaws in place for this property relative to. Controlling space and height and type, um. But can you expound upon that a little bit more? For instance, if we truly are trying to find obtainable pricing, uh, units. Is it the intention of the MPTA bylaw to stipulate? Uh, a minimum or a maximum size?
Well, size in terms of square footage of living space, no. Size in terms of dimensions of the building overall, that's, there are some details in the bylaw.
Okay, so I need to go back and review that myself, so I can get up to speed on that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to thank you, because this is a, um. Rather emotionally charged, um. Proposal that's before this town. And, uh, I'm very much pro-open space and would love to see this stay a farm, but I understand. The need to comply with MPTA. Um, so I just wanted to thank you that, um, I, I feel that you're being very respectful. And answering questions to the best of your ability, and I just wanna let you know that I personally appreciate that.
Well, thank you for saying that, and, and once again, I, my first committee on town was the open space committee. And I joined it very quickly after moving into town, uh, because of my experience with my hometown back in Illinois, um. Once again, I, I have to point out. It would still be possible to put this MPTA zoning overlay on this land. But have the land never developed, because it was bought. By a group that kept it open.
But that is unlikely, that is, that is unlikely, it is going to, if this has an MPTA overlay on it, it is going to be developed. I really truly do believe that.
I, I hear you, but I think it's very likely to be developed with or without the MPTA zoning overlay.
We, we have to be straight up on this, I, I have questions from people that are, okay, go on.
Yeah.
Can I, can I continue with my questions? Um, my other question was, is, was a study done on the Dunn property as to how many units would likely go into that? If it ever was put on the market and available?
Yes, and the numbers are, are very similar. Uh, to the numbers on this property, so whether or not there's an MPTA zoning overlay district. On the Dunn property, the numbers are for all practical purposes the same.
And the Mullin property, uh, the woman who stood up from conservation, uh, said it would be a nightmare to develop. Would we be better off putting an overlay district on that? With the, with the understanding that you in essence. Really couldn't develop that to the, to the extent that you could the Dunn property or NAPS.
So the prob, there's a, there's a, a legal problem with the Mullin property. And that it makes it impractical to use because the town would have to sell it. Through town meeting, or have a purchase and sale agreement in place with the developer by December. Um, and there are some other details in there as well, so I think, I think your best position. To support your argument would be similar to others in the room who think we should put it on the Dunn property. Because the Dunn property is unlikely to be developed. Please. Please, uh, uh, Cat, uh, uh, wait a minute, uh, wait, did, did I lose where, where it's Catherine? Catherine, can I come back to you, uh?
I'm all set, I'm all set, thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, name and address though.
Again, what I'm trying to, to please voice is when I moved here. I came here because of the love of the small country community, and that's what I love about West Newbury. That's what makes me proud to live in West Newbury. As I see these mega complexes being built in other communities and. Monstrosity, it makes me happy to come home. And what they're proposing on that causes pause. And why is it being done? And I didn't really understand the whole overlay of the MPTA until I read it online yesterday. Which made me call our state representative today and voice my feelings of, I don't want this. I don't want to be told that I have to have a beautiful piece of property. Developed in a way I don't feel is appropriate in the town. Very breaking up, and it's, it's, it's heart wrenching. And what she told me, state representative, her assistant told me, that, that told the town I was from. And she said that Foxbury and some other towns had presented property. That they know has wetlands and may not be usable, as you're mentioning, these other properties. And then their obligation would be fulfilled. To the MPTA and our hands would be more or less washed, I hope I'm saying this properly. You're laughing, but you're.
I'm not laughing, I'm cringing.
Oh, because you're a Realtor and you.
No, I'm no longer a Realtor, but.
That's, that's just my perspective on loving this town.
I've loved it for fifty years, and I continue to, and I serve you in the best way that I can.
And that's what I want, I want the.
Good.
As beautiful and pristine as it is now, and that's basically the vibe.
That's what we call.
So there's so many other areas that they can build in this town.
There are.
So, um.
I love open space.
We, we do have a person online.
I'll, I'll come to that person real quick, I just wanna say a couple of things to remain to your comments, cuz I appreciate that, by the way, uh. One of, one of the planning board's goals in our, with mission, mission statement. Is to preserve the rural character, every time we do a study on town, every time we do a survey. That's the number one thing people in this town put up, that they love the rural character and they wanna keep the rural character. So I'm very sympathetic to that. Um, at the same time. People have property rights, and if you own a parcel of land and you want to sell it to somebody, you have to have that right. We can't take that right from you. Uh, ideally, if somebody had an idea of a farm or whatnot, they could make an offer to a, uh, owner of a big piece of land. That was better. I'm just, I'm just saying, in general, I'm not, in general, um, uh, if somebody's got a piece of land, ideally. Somebody wants to preserve it as a farm would make them a better offer than a, than a developer would. I don't know if that happens, but I'm, excuse you, I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to what you're saying. The other thing that comes up though, from what, what you're saying here, is that the state requires that we provide developable. Land, there's a, there's a legal phrase there, so we couldn't just put this into a wetland. And expect this, uh, the state would approve it.
But again, the perk test that they're responsible for.
The perk tests, right, that is okay, so if they perk the land and find out that in, on the nap property. After we do it on the nap property, they can only get fifteen units in there, no matter how. Uh, it's zoned, then that, that would control. And, and I don't know, I honestly don't know what this land would support by the time they do all the percolation studies. I suspect that if a developer is very serious about buying the land, they've already done those perk tests and the developer knows, I don't. Uh, if, if the land, if, if, if the developer has to come to us for a special permit. Then, then we find out those details, but of the three, if, if we put the overlay zoning on it, like, there'd be three options. A conventional subdivision, the developer doesn't have to come to us. An open space, that's a special permit, they do have to come to the planning board, and then MPTA zoning, this is a buy right thing, and they would have to come to us. Now, I, we got, we got somebody on Zoom I wanna get to. Yeah, yeah, Henry Dodge, he says. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Garrett Wuchekowitz, one seventy-eight Main Street. I have a few questions, um. I don't know much about the law, there, that, there is a law that existed, but I was wondering, is there a conflict of interest? A listing agent for the property. Is a developer, and he's also served on the West Newbury Planning Board, is there a conflict of interest there?
If I thought there was a conflict of interest, I promise you, I would recuse myself, I promise you. I, I, there's, there, what's that?
Previously serving on the West Newbury Planning Board, is a listing agent for the property and also the developer for the property. Those three things, is there a conflict of interest there?
There, if, if I, if, if it were. So are you asking, does the developer have the conflict of interest, or do we?
Mister John Sarkis.
Okay, so your, your question is, does John Sarkis have a conflict of interest because he once served on this plan?
And because he's the listing agent for the property and because he's the developer. Me personally, when I heard the property was going on the market, I live across the street, I emailed Mister John Sarkis personally. Inquiring about the property. And all I got was a run, oh, you know, nothing's gonna be happening with that property for, you know. Another year, so, keep getting back to you, Dan.
So I, I don't know the answer to that, I do know what a conflict of interest is. Uh, and we all have to, uh, avoid conflicts of interest. And if there's any question, there's a state hotline I've called before and asked them. You know, whether or not to recu, Doug Hamilton recently recused herself from, uh, from one of our discussions because she was in a butter. Um, if there's any way that I would benefit from one decision or another, because. That particular guy got this development, then I would have a conflict of interest, or, or if my wife or my kids or somebody would, would benefit. That would be my conflict of interest. If everybody up here had a conflict of interest, the entire board can't recuse itself, and then there's a special law about that and all that, well. But I, I don't perceive me having any.
The conflict of interest has to do with town officials. Whoever is a Realtor or a developer or whatever, as a private citizen. Isn't subject to a conflict of interest that governs.
I think, I think you have, yeah, I think you have to be in a public position. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, my next question is for Deb. What is the price point for formal outline that you're looking for in West Newbury?
Attainable or for?
That's a absolutely arbitrary number, I have no idea.
Well, just for example.
Yeah.
I went on Zillow and the three latest condos that are sold in West Newbury. Two bedroom, three bathroom, twenty-seven hundred square feet, nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty-two moving in. Four bedroom, five bathroom, thirty-nine hundred square feet, one point one unit.
Yeah.
Ninety-three Main Street. Seven hundred and thirty thousand.
How many square feet?
Um, I, I just, it's a three bedroom, three bathroom.
That's one of the duplexes.
Twenty, twenty-seven Follons being laid. Number twenty, unit number twenty-four, seven hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah.
That's the beginning of Frank's town.
Now, this is getting back to, I was fortunate enough to move this town in two thousand seventeen when it was a little more affordable. It was still a stretch. In my opinion, living in West Newbury is a privilege. We all had to work very hard to be able to live in a town like this, that's why we moved, I moved here. Was not easy. Was not easy. Those price points for condos are not affordable. I could not, I could not attain one right now.
No, but what you said, they were twenty-seven hundred and thirty-nine hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's bigger than I think of a condo.
So, alright, more twenty-seven Follons be laid. Unit twenty-four of seventy.
Yeah.
And that was earlier in the year.
Yeah, those, those, the Follons be laid is an example of units that we hoped would be more attainable. Like less than five hundred thousand.
I never felt they were about that.
But.
The town of the way it is right now. Is because that's what gives us our home values. You know, this is why our, our homes cost as much. My home, besides our 401K, is my best investment. And I want to protect it.
So, so your concern is that if we do the MBTA zoning mobile aid district and it gets built up. That it's gonna have a negative effect on your property value?
It could. When, if I were to sell my home, say, two years from now, and if that's built. Would you consider my home if there was forty units across the street?
Well, I.
Honestly.
I, no, I, I'm being honest.
If, if that was, I mean, it'd have to be a crazy deal.
If, if I, if I loved a house on Main Street across from, um, Daley's? I, I, I don't think that that would have a huge negative impact on it. I, I'm just being honest.
I was, when I moved here in two thousand seventeen, Naps was up and running. I was, that was my only hesitation about buying that house.
And then you loved that.
Because it was a greenhouse and there was like, you know, people pulling in and out, night hours.
Yeah.
And boy, I wish I would have listened to my hesitation. Oh.
I'm sorry.
Because if, if, if I was looking at my house now and I got a whiff of that going on, all said.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't think we've seen, you know, in, in the two developments, the two cottage developments that have gone on and, and, and. We've heard that from others and I, and I understand it. I, I, I don't think that there's a whiff of any negative, you know, property devaluation or whatever. I mean. Yeah, we're all benefi- beneficiaries of, of a crazy real estate market. And I know, you sound here, where are you going? You're gonna go find someplace down in Alabama somewhere or something. I mean, it's, it's, it is ridiculous. It's beyond, I agree with you, but I don't think you have. Worry about devaluation, other than outside extraneous factors of the general economy. You know, that's always a, but, you know.
When they were building a high school, the new school, the trucks. Sure, construction vehicles going by my house every day. I had no deal with that. I couldn't wait till that school was done.
Yeah, yeah.
And to finally be done with it and have a beautiful school for my kids to go to. Now to have to live across the street from a project of possibly forty units and have to live through the construction of that. I understand.
Sir, I, I ran major construction projects and it's the worst thing that I had to explain to people. It does, it takes time. Build, you build commercial projects, residential projects and it takes time. We haven't figured out a way to compress. A year and a half of construction in the south end. I, I know. It, it is painful.
Okay, it's, alright, I'm all, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
President Zach Thompson, who had raised his hand. Zach, are you there?
Hi, Zach Thompson, one ninety-nine Main Street. I was just following up on Garrett's conflict of interest statement. So about a, a year ago, at our last town meeting, I, as, as Garrett was saying, Sarkis did. Announce his interest in front of the planning board. He also told a number of abutters after the meeting that he had sent the plans to you all. Uh, what I do find as a conflict of interest with the board is that by taking the Dunn's property off the table. You have made a decision to, that will directly benefit your previous colleague on the board. As experts, you made that decision independently without the town.
So if, if the fact that John Sarkis has an interest on the nap property. If that sway will we consider our best recommendation to the town, that would be wrong. Um, if, if resulted in some benefit, either direct or indirect to us personally. Then that would be a conflict of interest. Um. If, if, if we were to hide some sort of relationship, that would both be ethically wrong and a conflict of interest.
Well, the gentleman left said, it's the first I've ever heard of it, but he announced himself to the town meeting a year ago. It, it just feels like you're distancing yourselves from him. Rightfully so, given your relationship.
No, I, I, John Sarkis, uh, served on, uh, the planning board. I don't remember the exact years. It's been a while now. I thought he was a great guy on the planning board. I didn't expect to agree with him as often as I did when we had discussions about pieces of property. I consider him a friend of mine. I like the guy. I don't know, I intentionally don't know what the status is on the contract. I haven't seen any paper plans or plans in PDFs or anything. It was my understanding, it has been my understanding for a year now, that he was the guy interested in the nap property. But I haven't had any conversations with him about this development or any other development in town. I think other planning board members, well. These guys over here probably didn't serve with John, so they don't have that. These guys over here did serve with John. They're probably in the same situation that I am. Again, I promise you, I swear to God. If I thought I had a conflict of interest, I would, I would have stated it and I would have recused myself from this. But the other thing here also is that I am not making a decision for the town. What I'm doing is I am recommending what I think is the best bylaw that we can have that will comply with the law. And to put that before the town for the town's vote.
But you took the Dunn property law, so you don't give that option to the town.
So, so.
He's a colleague.
The statement is.
Twenty years on this board.
The state, the statement was that we took the Dunn property law. So, uh, we had to, two joint meetings with the select board about whether to offer. Both properties as part of the bylaw or make a recommendation for one property as part of the bylaw. At the first joint meeting, after some discussion, I actually proposed that we. Have two bylaws come forward and let the town choose which one. Um, but after some discussion, uh, we came down, it was the opinion of the select board and the majority of the planning board. That it was our responsibility to, to. I don't wanna use the phrase man up, but I can't think of another. To, to, to actually, to, to adult up and, and make a recommendation based on our knowledge. When it came down to a vote of which of the two properties, the original decision was going to be, the select board would vote. And then the planning board would vote. The select board discussed it and they decided they didn't wanna vote. They wanted the planning board to vote only. So we took, we had the traffic study done, the finance impact done, the water study done. Um, uh, the location with respect to the school in downtown. Um, the location of the sidewalks, the topography, the impact of the abutters. We got this long list, I think there's thirty or forty items on the list. We looked at the pros and cons. When all that was done. It was the unanimous and I think principal decision of the planning board. That our best recommendation based on our experience with this project was the nap property over the Dunn property. Yeah?
Again, he's a, he's a previous colleague and he's been with the planning board for twenty years.
Yes.
We live in a big house. Him to take the, to make, to make the decision on the nap property and not the Dunn property. Or giving two options to the town, which is what you should do, give two options to the town.
Okay, alright, I, I understand that there's a perceived conflict of interest here. Uh, but we, we live in a small town. And we, that's one of the things we love about it. And we had somebody who was a school teacher, somebody else and, and people. Had Deb as a real estate agent. I've been on the planning board a long time. A, a lot of people know a lot of people. And a lot of people like a lot of people in this town. I, I promise you. That the fact that I like John Sarkis was not part of my decision. I promise you, it was not part of my decision. To recommend that over Dunn. Go ahead.
I'm Brian Dugard from Moore Harrison. Um, there's, just looking at, you know, the news and talking about what's going on in different towns, but even talking here. It's quite clear that there are two different strats. One is to propose an overlay that is not buildable or delaying building. And the other is to select a property that is ready to go, developer in, contingency on an agreement on PNS. Ready to go. And there are two different views. There's a view, what I see is the majority of the town would prefer to have a strategy. To select a property that's not gonna have the tight ends in the overlay. The planning board has the opposite view. And you mentioned you quit at the beginning of the meeting, that you thought we voted you in place, so you can make those decisions. I think we should vote on this.
Would, your point is correct. I, I think you're exactly right. No, no, that, that you're exactly right, that. There are those two approaches here. One is to overlay something where you don't think it'll ever be developed. And one is to overlay something that could be.
Not, that would be developed. Everything's gonna be developed. Dunn's will be developed.
Well, okay, alright.
Great scenario, go ahead.
Oh, I, I, I'm essentially, I'm trying to agree with you. Um, it's just a little, maybe, okay, one, well, actually, I think that the two options are overlay a district where it won't. Or it's sometimes where it's already been developed and so it makes a difference.
Pick the Drake property or something like that.
Something like that. So there are those two approaches, that's right. Yeah, and.
Why, why should we vote on it? Why do you, why does the planning board feel that they should make that decision?
You do have the right to vote on it, sir, at a town meeting.
No, 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 those both, you, you mentioned, Mister Cook, that you. Took it as your responsibility that's being voted in to make that decision.
I do believe it's my responsibility as a planning board member to bring to the town what I think is the best solution. I absolutely respect people who disagree with me. From disagree a little bit to really disagree with me, because. I believe in, in the whole democratic idea. And I think that the points that you bring up here. Are appropriate here and also will be appropriate when we go to town meeting.
So we get to discuss it again at town meeting?
Oh, it'll be discussed at town for the vote.
I mean, to vote on what has already been decided, so.
We, we have a forum coming up, that's.
We, we bring, we bring the proposed bylaw to the town. And then the town has to vote on whether or not to accept the bylaw.
But you give a very difficult, a more difficult choice, which is take this and toss a lot of grants.
Right.
Versus pay this too often. You don't give us the option of, like. We actually don't have to move grant money.
So whether, whether it's a conflict of interest or not, there is an apparent bias. On the planning board, that they would rather have the nap property have this overlay than that non property. That's like.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that it's a bias. I think that it, it's the, it, it's our recommendation based on all the information.
What, what we didn't really go into was the analysis of the Dunn property. We know the nap property pretty well.
Well, you want it to be developed.
No, 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 this is, we're going back to twenty twenty-three here. We've been working on this now for several years. And we looked at both of them. From my perspective, knowing what the town is like, knowing that the Dunn property was excavated when the Georgetown dump was closed. And that's why that hill is cut away there. Building there looks very problematic. I don't see.
The ultimate strategy, your strategy is build.
My strategy is to try to create some housing for people who are not already here. And, and, and would like to live here.
Vote on it, whether that's.
The town should vote on those two different criteria, not just pay the bill for the move the money.
And we brought this up at numerous meetings with the planning board, but you ignore the, the, the people on this.
Please, please don't say that I'm ignoring anybody.
But it wasn't, it wasn't brought up and, and you, even the plans were provided by the builder. Over a year ago and he spoke to, to the town, the planning board about his design. And yet today, when we first come here, you're all like, we don't know if there's a buyer. We don't know anything about this. You, you're kind of, you're, you're, you're talking very like, you're naive to like, where, where we are coming from, where.
No, I, I don't presume that anybody's naive here.
Oh, I just know he said this. And he presented the plans to you and he, he presented a, a slideshow. And yet today, you're like, I don't know. I don't know if there's a buyer. I don't know if there's a.
No, I didn't say that.
Yeah, you did.
No, I didn't. I said.
You said it last week too, maybe last month.
No, no, I said, I said that it, I didn't feel it was appropriate to mention Mister Sarkis's name. At this meeting, because I didn't feel it was relevant to this particular discussion. Now, I, I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes here. We have discussed the idea of putting an overlay district on a parcel that will not be developed. Or would be delayed by a couple of decades. We talked about that philosophy. Um, and we talked to the select board about whether to, you know. Do the, kind of the two option thing at town meeting or just the one option. And, and we decided that we needed to adult up and, and make our best recommendation. And that's what we've done. And I absolutely respect town meeting vote. When people come up, I've learned things at town meeting and they state their points of view. And something, I've gone into town meeting, pretty sure I'm gonna vote this way on something and after discussion, I end up changing my mind because somebody brought up good points. Um.
That was, I'm saying that, you know, we don't want the building to happen. We do want it to happen. I mean, next, signals from. All of them. My other question is, this MBTA project that they force on every town and city. When does it stop? Could it creep up again in three years and say, okay, we need to take another piece of land, we need to build again? It's another can of worms there.
It's, it, 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 yeah, that's. This, this, the way this whole thing has been imposed on all the communities in eastern Massachusetts. What?
You don't have to accept with being voted upon.
That's correct. No, that's correct. No, look, I, I, I took note to support. To uphold the laws of, of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I feel it's my ethical responsibility. To bring to the town as a member of this board, a bylaw which will comply with the laws of Massachusetts.
And I, I have thoughts on that. I have clear guidance here. Only has to be buildable, doesn't have to be available. That was the guidance from the governor on this.
Right, right, right. So, so look, I'm telling.
That's between sketchy, we're following the, the guidance he provided.
Okay, the, s- sketchy is sort of a, that's, the, the. I believe.
Other towns have done this and this has been.
Yes, and the town of Western Uber can turn this down. The, the town of Western.
Um, definitely, we're gonna hear more options to rip the, um.
It, it's difficult to make substantial changes. It's not difficult to make small changes. What's that?
It's difficult to live with the developments that the town doesn't want to happen.
Yes, it is.
Has it already been written down? Oh, it's gonna be worded.
And, and. No, if, if, if this, if this, if this version of this document were written in stone, then this whole public here. No, if 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 this, if this, if this version of this document were written in stone, then this whole public hearing thing would be a farce.
So there shouldn't be a doubt.
So it's our responsibility to bring to the town what we think is the best solution. It's the wisdom of the town at town meeting to to vote to discuss it and then to vote on it.
But not if you don't give the people who are voting knowledge of another option. And that option is not, from what I'm hearing, one that you want to offer for town people to understand and vote on.
I, I don't. I, so one of the reasons why we've been having these public forums is to make sure that people are informed or at least have the opportunity to be informed. And I appreciate everybody coming here tonight and listening to all this and staying late and 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 becoming more educated about it. That's a good thing. As far as the other option, if if, was there any time at the meeting tonight where where we've said that there was no other way to approach this? If I said that the 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 putting overlay on the Dunn property was not possible? No, what I've said is that after all of this and after doing the studies on the Dunn and the nap and looking at traffic impact and all this other stuff, that we think we voted unanimously, we thought the nap property was the proper piece of property to bring to the town.
So can we assume that you will entertain educating the town on options other than the ones that you are recommending? Allowing the town to vote on the Dunn versus the nap? Are you going to offer that as an option for the townspeople?
I fully expect, especially after this public hearing, I fully expect that the possibility of putting overlay on the Dunn property will be part of the discussion at at town meeting.
Would you educate people in time and thoroughly enough as you have thankfully done here?
You're pretending it is a biased manager.
You are.
Maybe I'm intentional, but but it it's clear that the planning committee wants to build on the nap property.
No, no, no.
But that is what.
You know, what what's clear is that we felt, what's clear is that, well, after looking at all the information, what we think is the better property is the nap property. We don't want to build it.
If you don't want to build it, you can pick the Dunn, right?
We're not, we're not building anything. The town doesn't.
Oh.
Yeah, but but we we do recommend that the overlay district be put on a parcel where it's our understanding that the parcel will be developed. The question is, does the developer have the two options that already exist? Or will the developer have this additional option that would then also satisfy the state? And 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 so that's where we're at. When we looked at the Dunn property and we didn't just write it off, I mean, we really looked at the Dunn property. There's all kinds of plans and ideas and concepts, the traffic study, the sightlines, the impact on the, you know, how far people have to go to get to the high school, how far people have to go to get downtown, all this kind of stuff. Yeah, it is closer downtown. That's one of the things we talked about. So we honestly, I swear to God, we looked at these two parcels far, right? We got all the best information we could. Sometimes it was a toss-up, like the finance study. It's a toss-up. It doesn't matter to the town. The traffic study, it's a little better at the nap than it is at the Dunn. But it's pretty much a wash there too. And we, in the end, we felt like we had to make a recommendation. This is our recommendation.
So can we vote to be this? How do we alter, go out altering the vote so we can vote on the two options?
I I think, I think the way that you would do it is you would speak up at town meeting. You would encourage people at town meeting to agree with you and then vote down on this. And then with a clear message to send it back to us to to do it another way. Maybe the Dunn property or maybe some other way. We still got a while. People may come up with other ideas, right? So I think that's what, I think that's your best approach. Now, if two hundred people show up at town meeting and uh, the majority of people there agree with you, then it gets voted down. We go back, we got one more shot at it. And then it could be voted down then, and then we just won't comply. And then we'll see.
We can comply.
Or, 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 another thing comes up and we and we comply by doing this other thing.
But we'll have to vote on it at town meeting. And there will have to be a vote on that at town meeting.
Yeah, there, we will vote, we will vote on something that's pretty much this. Uh, at at this spring town meeting, at the regular, oh, well, I guess it's this technically the special town meeting that happens in the spring. Uh, there's, there's two town meetings and technically in the spring, there's a special time, I might go, whatever. And if if you vote it down there, then I promise you, we'll come back with something in the fall. And we're going to come back with something we think will pass. One of the reasons why we didn't bring anything up in the spring of twenty twenty-four is because of our response to the public hearing. We didn't feel we were ready yet. We needed more information.
And why can't you give us that option today?
Because we've gotten the information.
Why can't you op, give us two, two options to the town for that special?
Honestly?
Why do we have to wait there and then voice our opinion to to shoot one down?
Well, you're, you're certainly voicing your opinion here tonight.
Absolutely. That's the town part of this. Right.
For the public hearings.
Public hearing, yes.
I I gotta be honest with you. Already, this is bought by the attorney general. Already, we we've done our research. We're ready to present. This is our proposal. I don't think we have time.
But last month, you showed option A and B between the two properties. And so so was it, you already had that and then.
That's back, back in January, we did.
Oh, it's February. Is it February meeting?
At seven o'clock.
February twelfth.
Oh, yeah.
So that's not even, it's just been a month.
And has anybody pursued requesting an extension?
Well, essentially, extension would be to go to the fall town meeting for a vote.
I'm thinking there's no time to prepare a choice for the community between, say, the Dunn and the nap. That's what I'm hearing you say. I don't have time. For me, I think that we're just, you know, getting the time to do.
I I think, I think there's, I think there is a path if you want the overlay district on the Dunn property, which I just outlined.
But I hear you saying, and I heard you wrong, that there's a clock ticking that you won't be able to meet that deadline.
I still think, okay, we have people who are very interested and you showed up tonight and I appreciate that. I still think the best recommendation to the town as a whole is what we have here.
And why not, can you help me understand why succinctly? Why that Dunn alternative is not acceptable to you compared to?
No, the Dunn, we think that the net, that the Dunn property could work. The nap property, I feel, is the better proposal to bring to the town. You represent a subset here, a vocal, important subset of the people of the town. I have to bring to the town what I think, we as the board, what we think is the best recommendation to the town as a whole. If your arguments are persuasive to the majority of people at town meeting, then this will get voted down and we'll come back with something in the fall. And judging from if your arguments here tonight are successful, what we would come back with would be the Dunn parcel. But I feel it's our responsibility still to give our best recommendation to the town as a whole at town meeting.
When you do that, will you also explain to the voters that there is another option? Explain that option and say, we've chosen this one, but people have to know what else is available.
Let me ask you this. Is there somebody here tonight who will promise to bring this up at town meeting?
I think so.
If if somebody, if somebody at town meeting brings this up, I will not hesitate to discuss it.
I think you would have several people bring it up.
I think so. I think it's going to happen.
Well, I'm, I'm just surprised it wasn't brought up. We we talked about this last year about our our option B. And we had the same forum in what we're in the town hall there. And yet you went, moved forward with your option of the nap property without looking at.
No, no, we we looked at.
I think you, you showed the comparison because I saw the video earlier today. But you never looked at option B, the nap property, saying you don't want to, again, make it buildable but not a bill. It's not a bill. Well, that's an option that the county wants.
Right.
And everybody here as well, or mostly everybody.
I understand that. And that's, that's the argument that you need to bring to town meeting. Your, your argument is valid. Bring it to town meeting. Persuade people. If maybe, you know, and you want, of course, you want to, you want to convince people with your similar point of view to show up at town meeting and support your position. Right? That's the way to do it by the system that we have here.
You should have done that by yourselves.
Well, no, we, we did our best, we did our best job. We looked, we looked at at those and based on the last public hearing, we also looked at the, uh, let's see, I keep forgetting Mullin. We looked at Mullin, we found out about why that doesn't work.
Well, you can tell me in local state is option A, option is to build on the nap property.
No, with the overlay. Put the overlay zoning on the nap.
Zoning, right, exactly. Put the overlay zoning on the nap property is is approved by every member of the of the planning board. And and we're going to, in the option B, or if we don't do vote for that, the town is going to be impacted by by uh, financial impacts from the city.
They won't build the.
We, it would be not even, they won't listen to any option B.
Right? Why would they not listen to you?
Because they won't know about it.
But no, look, look, you're, you're going to tell them and anybody's.
We have the forum. You can come to the forum.
Yes. Yeah, there's also a forum.
Is there any plan to educate the voters in the town?
There is a forum. And you can attend, and it was on the mailer, and you can go to the.
I learned more three days ago when I got this.
So you can come at the front of the public. To do the part of your job that you didn't want to do. I'm sorry, I disagree with you.
Um, I'm, I'm saying this.
Come to the forum in April.
Everyone called mine. I know, two days ago, but it has the April fifteenth forum date on it. That's what I'm saying. Yes, and that's, thank you, that's wonderful. But there are other ways that people can be educated on. You obviously felt this was an important and effective way to get people educated.
We're really, we're really trying.
I I I'm not saying that. And you put in in numerous hours. And I'm not saying I appreciate that.
I I'm sorry, we we had two public hearings a year ago on the same topic. There was a great deal of education in the town at that time. So it it it, this is not something new.
I'm not saying you didn't, please.
I I I realize that, but you are. You're telling us that we have to edu, we've been at this and the town has been invested in this. The whole, a year and a half now.
Because I learned a lot.
That's fine. I'm, I'm.
And I learned a lot by something I found in my mailbox.
Yes.
Um. This is two thousand twenty-five. Are there more effective ways?
Or you, we, just, just so you know.
We don't have newspapers anymore. I'm sorry. I miss, I miss the newspaper. Probably get our notifications or this is what it is.
Well, one of, one of the things that Katrina's been great about, and and you probably wouldn't have noticed this, but she's been updating our website and making as much available as possible, including not just. Yeah, not, it's not just agendas, but the whole packet. I mean, everybody in town can see everything that I see before coming into one of these meetings.
Yep.
We had a discussion about, about, you know, trying to do something on Facebook, but that has all kinds of problems with it as well. And and so, and then we talked about the mailer and trying to figure out what's we cost and when we could get it out. And then there was a problem with the printer and, you know.
And it was well done. I've got to say it was well done and it was.
Can I just question on the floor again?
Because about sure.
We, we, okay, all right.
Again, we talked, my first point was we were never notified as a butter. Okay, we get notified on many things. Well, it doesn't matter, but the guy down the street who built in his porch, I got notified that, which is great. You know, we're notified what's happening. This changes our neighborhood completely and we weren't notified. We had to hear about like, I attended the meetings last year, but I didn't see the one for February, okay? And I saw on the video, there's only two people in the, in in the audience, one being the builder. Okay, so these are things we would should, as 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 a butter, we should have been notified about this. And we would have been at this meeting instead of today.
You received the emails.
Correct. I I could have been away. I was away.
I'm sorry, you're a citizen of the town. You have to take a little responsibility to read the email and the agendas. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I, I. But it was, the last meeting we had was back in November. And then all of a sudden, it shows up on the agenda for this time.
For February. Can I add something? Um, for everyone's education years as well, we meet every two weeks. I don't know if everyone knew this. Uh, mostly on Zoom. Uh, we have met in person a few times, but every two weeks, two nights, right?
Yeah.
And these are all, correct me if I'm wrong, these are all public. So anyone can attend. And every week, every two weeks, the agenda goes out in that email. And it it tells the main community what we're going to be speaking about. So, um, we just, I I didn't know that from me down at the beginning of the work.
Thank you.
Kind of mentioning, because this conversation, I'm newer to it because I just joined the board nine months ago. But uh, this has been going on for a while and very, I mean, every two weeks you talk.
And we brought up numerous times about the property and it keeps getting ignored.
It, we've been talking about it for months, years.
It keeps getting ignored.
Well, you, you and I disagree about whether or not we're ignoring, ignoring you. I, I. I, I, I want, I want to go to Dan Patricia on Zoom again. And and I see Alex's hand still up. Is he?
Yeah, there's Alex's hand up and Dan Patricia, questions have to go through the chair.
So so uh, let's go to Alex, if Alex is first. No, Alex dropped back. Okay, Dan Patricia.
Uh, yeah, hi, Patricia Reeser again. I'm, I'm sorry, I may have missed this because it was hard to hear um, while members of the audience were speaking sometimes. Um, I heard a question asked, but I didn't hear the answer, which is, you know, since this, um, the state law doesn't really address the need for affordable housing um, in any meaningful respect. Um, and is not something the town would have enacted on its own. Um, why is, did the planning board decide to look at properties that were actually available instead of complying, however cynically, technically with the law by creating an overlay district on an already developable property or even the industrial zoned properties?
So I didn't, I didn't quite get your uh, question, Patricia. Um, can, can you, can you ask it again? What?
So what was the reasoning of the planning board in view of the fact that the MBTKTA Communities Act doesn't meaningfully address the need for affordable housing in town? And isn't otherwise a density that the town would have voluntarily uh, wanted to enact? Why did the planning board decide to look at properties that were uh, vacant instead of looking at properties that were already developed or even the industrial zone for an overlay district?
Gotcha. So uh, right, so there's, again, now we get to this philosophical point that you could meet the letter of the law by doing an overlay district on something where, how can I put this? It would be meaningless because it couldn't be developed according to the law. So, um, I think it just evolved after discussions that we felt it was our responsibility to put it in a place where it would actually make sense.
Yep.
But I do think that it is a valid approach to put it, to put the overlay district in a place where you know it has no effect. Um, it surprises me that this wouldn't get you into legal jeopardy. But I understand that there are communities out there who have done this. So I think that now we're talking about a philosophical point of view that can be discussed before the vote.
The only thing that I would add, Ray, is that I think it has to be developable property. I think that word is used on the statute, right? So, you know, you just couldn't, like you made the point before, but designate like a what, you know, uh, as the district, you know? It does have to be developable to some degree. I don't think the state does a lot of due diligence on that. And so some.
Oh, what about something that's already developed?
Well, that's, that's development, right?
So that was good to build.
Yes, yes.
There's nothing in town that's built to that density though. That already developed thing. The, the, the already developed thing works in places like Cambridge or. The, 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 oh, already developed thing works in places like Cambridge or Somerville where they take a swath, you know, it's already densely built upon, it gets you to the fifteen units per acre.
But it doesn't have to be built. Mine, right, it doesn't have to be built already, you can, you can have the overlay.
But you're saying it wouldn't have any.
It would cost a developer more money to develop that property, but it would be still buildable. Either bricks, landings, or boulders, or dunes, or any other property could.
Yes, so. So now, now we're into that philosophical discussion. Right? And I think it, it's not my personal one, but I think it's a valid approach to say, let's put this on a place where it will not result in any real options for a developer.
So just curi-, just curious, I know you're from the Chicago area, and you, you moved here, you like the rural feel, why do you think it's important that we meet the, uh, the intent of more here with the community's law to enact, or put it in a place where it could be built, what is your reason for that?
My personal, it's just one member on the board, my personal, uh, reason is that I think it's my responsibility as a planning board member to bring to the town something that meets the letter and the intent of the law. But I understand and respect people who disagree with me on that. But I think it's my responsibility, because I swore the oath and all that kinda stuff, to try to, to try to meet the law. I don't like the way this has gone down. I don't like the state mandating this on us. I think we as a town have been acting very responsible, responsibly for years to try to do the best for the town and the community and the larger Commonwealth. So it's sort of a slap in the face, sort of an insult for the state to say, you know, and we don't, we don't, I mean, honestly, what do we, we only recently have a bus that comes through town, I don't even know how many times a day.
Maybe once a day.
Yeah, I mean, okay, to make us an adjacent community, I mean, I understand it, if you got a train station in Newbury Park, it makes a lot of sense to have some rental units right by the train station. I get that, so I'm not happy about it, but I feel it's my responsibility as the planning board member to, to, to bring this to the town. And I respect people who speak up at town and say, this is not the way to do it, I think you should do it another way, and to have that discussion and to have the vote. I absolutely respect your points of view here, e- even if you think I'm ignoring you or not hearing you. I, I, I promise you, they, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hear and consider, and I've been thinking about this. We've all been thinking about this for a long time. I, there was, uh, Dan, uh, Patricia, did, did you have more for me?
I, I guess I, I just wanted to be clear that this is not a, um, a binary choice between Dunn and NAP, in fact. Um, that the, the choice is really much greater than that, and I appreciate that the planning board has been doing yeoman's work for the last couple of years on this. Um, but, um, but there is a third approach, and it doesn't involve either NAP or, uh, or Dunn.
Yeah, that's, that, Patricia, that's one of the, early on, when we, uh, hired the consultant, and the consultant looked at all the parcels. Um. We, we accepted the consultant's conclusions on that. Um, that poor little piece of land, I, people here might not even know, there's a little slice of West Newbury on the other side of I ninety-five. It's our industrial zone. And over the years, we've tried to put all kinds of things in the industrial zone. So I think, Patricia, you were saying we could put our overlay district over the industrial zone. I don't know where we get into legal jeopardy as a town. Well, there's access and all that.
So it's closer to the MBGA.
But, but Ray, uh, but Ray, the point is, the point is, that was just perhaps a poor example, I mean, we could rezone the length of Crane Next Street for the MBTA community. Um, I mean, it doesn't.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Patricia, and you're right, I mean, it, we, we took, we, we got that, that state money and added to it, and we had that study done by a consultant, and, uh, and they looked at all this stuff, and we accepted, uh, their results, they seemed like they did good work to me, but I, I hear what you're saying, and it's a valid point, which again, can be discussed. Patricia, are you good for now?
I am a G, thank you.
All right, Alex?
Yeah, I'm here, sorry about that, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I just, I just have a couple of quick questions to run through, and I, I don't need any answers specifically tonight on these, and I'm sorry about earlier, my computer died. But, um, one of the questions I had was, has there been a study of how many people currently use the public transit system in West Newbury?
We only recently got a public transit service in West Newbury, the bus just showed up a couple of months ago.
No, it's been here for about five years.
Now, no, now.
Yeah, it has.
In, in town, but it did not stop, and it did not pick up passengers.
Okay.
It was the, uh, shortest path between Newbury Park and April, it did not start providing passenger service until.
But I, I think, I think the quick answer is Alex started to show that not many people use it.
And the whole point of this MBTA project is to get people to use the MBTA transit system, that's the point of this project.
Three thousand, to create that.
Yeah, as Anna just said, the point of it is to, uh, try to, this, the state government thinks that this is a way to get more housing built in the Commonwealth, and thereby maybe bring housing costs down over the years.
No, the, the point of it is to bring housing out of the city into the suburbs to use public transit back into the city, that's the point of it.
No, it is not.
I.
States that you should use so closely to the MBTA.
Yeah, I, I, I think the idea there is that you could have people that, that maybe don't have to have cars, could give to and from work more readily.
If I may.
Yeah, oh, yes, please, go ahead.
You can, you can read the purpose at the front of the regulations, the state lists the purpose for the law and the regulations online and in the regs, so if you wanna know what the state's goals and purpose are, you can read that in their documentation.
That's a good point. So, uh, at the beginning of, of the, uh, MBTA Communities Act, there's a statement of purpose, I'm sure it's easy to find online, and there would be more explicit about it.
Which is to get people to move out of the city to use the transit system to get into suburb, uh, more suburban areas, that's the point.
Alex said it's not the state.
Let Ian answer the question.
It's not the state of purpose on the state.
Ian from the MVPC says that's not the purpose, I haven't read the, uh, the, the preamble to the, then Ian, Ian's looking, you know.
Alright, so I, I think MVPC or whatever they are should do their research with the MBTA and figure out what there is, because it's two different things. The other thing is Deb, Deb Hamilton said that it, it, it provides housing for teachers, nurses, firefighters, office workers, town employees to afford an affordable house.
Well, I, I think what you were saying is it would, it would provide for a different type of housing which might work in some of those cir- circumstances, but it wouldn't be, it, it's, it's not affordable, in fact, that the state law prevents us from requiring more of the units to be affordable than we already have required through inclusionary zoning. But the idea is, and I think, I think there's, I think this makes sense, if there's a bunch of townhouses and whatnot, um, and they're modest size, then I think they're gonna end up being cheaper than single-family homes around the rest of West Newbury. But I don't know that, and, and, again, it would, the developer has to run their numbers and decide what the market will take, that's a developer thing.
My, my final question, I get, uh, uh, statement is you wanna cram all these units into a wetland restricted area on the Dunn property, I mean, on the, on the nap property, when the Dunn property, there's very little to no wetlands. So what's the point of doing, trying to do that, when you're trying to conserve wetlands?
You can't, you can't build, you can't build in the wetlands area, and you can't build in the buffer zone, whatever the conservation, uh, commission that knows all the wetlands laws and whatnot, that still applies here. So, and we, we're not trying to cram a bunch of units anywhere, we're just trying to put an overlay district, uh, in West Newbury so we comply with the law, and we're pretty sure whatever gets built is gonna be way less than than what that overlay district technically allows through central map. Good, Alex?
No, I'm not good, but I'm not gonna get upset tonight over this because it's just ridiculous.
I, I understand, Alex, I, and.
And I, I appreciate, I do appreciate, I do appreciate all the work you're doing, the God's here, right, I do not appreciate him.
Okay. Alex, I'm gonna move on to Catherine, buddy, uh, you know, raise your hand again, Catherine?
I swear, this is the last question I have.
That's all right, Catherine.
I wanted to expound a little bit on, on what Patricia was saying, as far as this not being a binary decision, should the town decide not to move forward with the nap overlay? And my question would be, is is the planning board open to considering the identification of a parcel for an overlay that is currently built upon, but that meets the MBTA requirements, in other words, how, are there parcels out there that we could put an overlay on that would have no effect? Um, and is the planning board willing to discuss with the town where those parcels may be located?
So, uh, the short answer is yes. Uh, if this proposal gets voted down at town meeting, then we go back to the drawing board, and based on what we hear at town meeting, uh, you know, we, we do our best to bring something to the town that we think the town will vote for.
Would you consider, uh, what I'm hearing a lot of tonight is that the residents are feeling that they're not being given options, and while we understand that you are in a position to be of assistance to us, to help us formulate our decisions, I think what I'm hearing tonight is a lot of people saying we would appreciate options. So, do you think if, if the town does not go forward with the idea that NAPs is a good location for an overlay, would the planning board consider perhaps off, offering the town a couple of options, one of them being a no effect option, that's already developed but meets MBTA requirements, and the other one being nap or something, I mean, Dunn or something similar? Would you consider, based on what you're hearing tonight, of coming back with maybe a more multifaceted approach?
Well, I, you know, I mean, me personally, yeah, I mean, if, 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 if we present this as, as what we think is our best recommendation, and the town votes it down, then we have to try to, we have to try again, and, uh, you know, I, I, I've worked with these people for a long, these are good people, and I don't think people are closed minded. So, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I don't want to imply, I don't want to imply in any way that you're not doing a good job, or that you're being closed minded.
I, I appreciate that, I do, thank you for saying it, but, um, we're, we're, we're trying our best, we'll continue to try our best.
I'm sure you will, I would just like to, um, just maybe highlight what I'm hearing, which is that people appear, and we're, we're only talking about the group that's here, of course, uh, but they may be indicative of, of the town as a whole. Is that perhaps, perhaps a multifaceted approach, should it not go forward at town meeting, might be a good way to go for round two, that's all I'm saying.
Understood, thank you.
And, and thank you.
You bet.
Bye. Um. Josh DeVoss out of sixteen Crane Next, so this is kinda behind us a little bit, um, we're not gonna have a direct line side of it, but maybe through that swam- swamp land or whatever, but, um, if this does get voted down, um, what do you think, or what does, what is the nap property gonna look like with a no vote?
So, I don't know, but we did have a, a, a yield plan, and this yield plan was done independently of anything that Mr. Sarkis may have shown people. And I swear to God, I haven't seen any plans that Mr. Sarkis might have. We did an independent, so, uh, you, so an engineer looked at, uh, both in that parcel and Dunn parcel to see what would be done under conventional subdivision, where they wouldn't have to come to the planning board for any approvals, they could do seventeen, seventeen lots, and each lot could have a duplex, not likely, but maybe, so somewhere between seventeen and thirty-four, and then you could have some ADUs on top of that, so you might get to the forty number, I doubt it, but you might.
Okay, yeah, so I, yeah, great, I know that.
And, and then, and then there's also the OSPD, which is a special permit, they would have to come before us, and there they could get, I think the number is twenty-seven.
Uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
So, yeah.
Twenty-five, and then, and then it's unclear right now about how many ADUs could go in on top of the twenty-five.
So a significant number, a number of properties, if there's not a farmer out there that wants to come buy the property and turn it into a farm?
Or the, the, a developer might figure that the best, the best profit on the property is just to do five big houses.
Five big houses, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, and the numbers are changing all the time, like I said, I mean, the, that whole tariff thing with Canada and lumber could change everything.
So a no vote doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be a farm?
No. No, absolutely not, in fact, right now, I think the most likely outcome, if, if this gets voted down, I think the most likely outcome is we're gonna see twenty to thirty in there without it, and with it, maybe ten more than that.
A yes vote would put this almost final draft, that's some additional guardrails as far as what this developer could do, right?
If the developer were to take advantage of the zoning overlay, right, then there, there actually is a little more control over what the developer does with this overlay district. But, but, but a developer doesn't have to comply with this, even if it's in place. So it, it, it's, it's all up to the developer which option to take, and then how to build it out, and again, the, uh, developers have to have these wicked complicated spreadsheets where everything comes into play.
But trying to understand what that property will look like based on this discussion here.
And there's one other thing I gotta mention since you brought it up, let's say we vote it down, and then at fault town meeting, it gets put on the Dunn property, right? And something happens in ten years from now, whoever's in charge of the Dunn property does decide to sell it. Then fifteen years from now, we could have the nap property developed between twenty and forty units, and then additionally, the Dunn property could be developed. What's that?
That's gonna play out any delay, that's gonna happen regardless.
Well, I guess the difference would be, is if this, if we, if we change this to the Dunn property, then, then nap might have twenty to thirty, and the Dunn property might have thirty to forty, if we vote this in, then that property might have thirty to forty, the Dunn property might eventually have twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a statement.
Yeah, only the, yeah. See, yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's in ways in like fifteen years.
We don't know.
Right? Is the board intending to close the hearing tonight, or is it?
Close it here.
Cause it is getting close.
I, I, I think, I think we should close the, the hearing.
I don't wanna cut things short, it just, it's, it's.
It is, it is getting late.
Uh. At least in town, four hours.
And, and.
Coming up in four hours.
And Ian spent here the whole time. Um. Did, I don't see any hands up on Zoom. I, and just because we close the public hearing doesn't mean that we're, we're shutting down. I, and just because we close the public hearing doesn't mean that we're we're shutting down listening to people, right? I mean, we have more meetings, we've got the um. The community forum next month, but we'll also have another planning board meeting. I don't know if this will be on the agenda, but the agendas will be posted. And um so, yeah, so with that being said, then I move to close the public hearing. We have secondly further discussion. Always in favor of closing the public hearing? It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. We have a few other agenda items, but I think we'll uh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, planning board, for everything you do. You guys are very patient. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ian.
I'm gonna tell you where to turn or not.
Oh, we've adjourned the public hearing.
We're just trying to figure out if we have time.
I saw the, sorry, I'm good. No problem, no problem.
Did Deb just go? No, we have to talk about when we're gonna do these.
On the first, yeah.
Last week's meeting, while the day to you.
Right, yes, we have to uh, on you there. You know, I mean, in a speed time.
So on April first. There'll be discussion of five of us. And so can we have especially, only if this deal, HRC, it's promised us that. If we can get the finished draft filed to them, they will review it before town meeting, which is very important for people to know. Yes, you know, we just need a group of these guidelines, so what's their deadline? Eagle first of all, thanks.
Just a, there's a, just a couple of tweaks that we have to.
Yeah, I mean, you have blessed the document. There are there are some changes, clearly, but they've already blessed it back.
Okay, so, and that is, that is the discussion, Ian, to vote your recommendation and do the town more. So, remember, I'm pretty the draft of order. What's the time, uh what's the correct time session on September? Um that is just a part of the public hearing, so we're closing the public hearing now. And so we're gonna have to know that, that item until April first, so we can discuss zoning by law and vote on the recommendation. And we have heard from town council that you have to have that specific language, that's why I included right here that.
So your specific language is not our.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the next meeting.
We'll see.
Oh, and the fifteenth is the design.
I mean, I'm not very sure we're ever gonna continue this public hearing in special thing.
Okay, we can continue the minutes tonight too, because I goofed. Oh, yeah, we actually had two sets of minutes, and I. Are we closing the meeting? I just.
Not not just yet, so uh did did we cover the agenda items with C E O?
There's seven, so we're moving minutes to the first. Yeah, there wasn't much on it. There was another, about towns knows from April.
All right, I move to close the uh West Newbury plan for.
Thank you very much.